You're looking good.
Yeah, yeah.
These names look well. I should have. You don't remember?
I met you a couple of times.
I've emailed you for that.
We have managed to achieve. I'm chief. It's been a bit serious. I'm managing. Uh, they were losing height on the street. But get that. That's true. Yeah, they, they. They're very reactive. He was really in the business. Who runs the show? Yeah. This is responsible for you. Two. Ten. Ten two. Um. Hmm. We have. And ask them. You know, when we're actually with each. Okay.
You want to put up?
Hey, my, uh, uh, those right here. Come on. No, no. Oh, oh, yeah. To be here. Oh, I don't think it's from all.
Didn't agree with me all day long. Second amendment, say, yeah, well, they, they did it.
Said, wait, it was a problem. There, no. There's no class. Yeah, come on, go back. Very, very. Ultimately, sign it. You can rather than punch. It's really gonna come from someone else. That's true. Eh? Right. So, do you think? The man, yes. Something that has. No, you saw some money in the room. You know. In the systems. If it depends on the issue. I don't think I thought that. Hmm? It depends. I didn't. What are they gonna do? They're getting, they're gonna get pitched.
I don't know. I can't speak for them. Do what you need to do. You're free to do this.
You're going to. Oh, I don't think you. You're. You. This, you know, they don't need to stay in the teachings. Yeah. Some ones. Give a taste of. I said that? Yeah. This is here. So.
I'd like to call to order the Wesley Town Council meeting for Monday, October 6, 2025. All councils are present. Town clerk, town sergeant, town manager, town solicitor present. Uh, first is the invocation by Councilor Healy.
Let us begin by taking a breath and a moment to hold space for those facing hardship near and far, and to remember the strength that comes from compassion and courage in equal measure. Let us remember that we are here to serve the people of Westerly together. We may not always agree, but we can always choose to lead with care and intention. Every decision we make here touches someone's life in this town. The work we do is about responsibility and stewardship of our words, our actions, and the trust of this community has placed in us. May we listen with patience, speak with honesty, and carry ourselves with integrity so that what happens in this room moves Westerly forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So, one flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. They have a safe and fair. To the republic, the word which is saying. Our nation, I thank God, be visible, the liberty, justice for all. Next, we have recognitions, awards, and memorials. Um, condolences for Barbara Ann Jay.
Hi, I just want to say before I read this that I knew, I knew Barbara Jay, and I, I just thought she was the sweetest little thing, um, ever. She was so professional and so kind and sweet to everybody. A competent tattoo to everybody that she, that came across her path. And I, I truly have only met her a few times, but every time I did, she was very, you just wouldn't forget her. Let's just put it that way. So, um, I'll read this for you. The town of, the Westerly Town Council expresses condolences on the death of Barbara Ann Jay in recognition of her commitment to the election process and to the electors of the town as an election official for various elections for many years, and then as a member of the Board of Canvassers from February 2023 to August 2025. The Town Council extends to the family and friends of said Barbara Ann Jay its sincerest sympathy with the hope that it offers some comfort in their time of sorrow. In witness whereof, we have hereby set our hands and cause the seal of the town of Westerly to be here unto fixed this sixth day of October 2025. All councilors signed.
Is there any family would like to come up and, and come on up? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilor Van Dover. Next, we have condolence for Margaret Stewart, Councilor Niemeyer.
The Westerly Town Council expresses condolences on the death of Margaret Stewart in recognition of her dedicated service to the town of Westerly as a member of the Westerly School Committee, having served for eight and one-half years, serving four of those years as chair and as comptroller for the town, where she proudly helped the town transition to computers. The Town Council extends to the family and friends of said Margaret Stewart its sincerest sympathy with the hope that it offers some comfort in their time of sorrow. In witness whereof, we have hereby set our hands and cause the seal of the town of Westerly to be here unto affixed this sixth day of October 2025, signed by all councilors.
Thank you for coming forward. Uh, next is a proclamation for the Extra Mile Day for November 1, 2025. Councilor Shalaba.
Uh, the Westerly Town Council proclaimed November 1, 2025, as Extra Mile Day in the town of Westerly and encourages all citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community, and further urges each individual in the community to take time on this day to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitments to make their organizations, families, community, country, and the world a better place. In witness whereof, we have hereby set our hands and cause the seal of the town of Westerly to be here unto affixed this sixth day of October 2025, signed by all councilors.
But thank the clerk, Mary LaBlanc, for putting that forward. It's an annual event, an annual recognition. Uh, next is ratifying confirm. Congratulations to Edward Grady Leon.
Right.
Brad alone, thank you. Congratulations to Robert Legori. Congratulations to Mary Matos. Um, and congratulations to Elizabeth Liz McFarland Santaro, all for the Dante Society Wesley 50th Anniversary.
Motion to ratify and confirm.
Second.
Motion made in second by Councilor Shalaba. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next presentations, there are none. Both citizens' comments. This section of the citizens' comments will be limited to the agenda items only. Um, each citizen will have five minutes. If you could state your name and address when coming to the podium. You have three people that have signed up. Caroline Contrada.
Hi. I'm here to comment on solicitors' comments. Twenty-two Mariner Heights, apartment one. So, I'm here to comment on the solicitor comment report. Um, the report refers to some figures for Spring Ave. Um, just in case anyone in the public doesn't know, my name is Caroline Contrada. I'm an intervenor in the case to reopen the public right of way. So, I'm, want to reiterate that Solicitor Conley and Attorney Sarah O'Toole are doing a good job. Um, I've been quite pleased with the things I've been reading. So, um, I think we have a good case. Um, I'm not an attorney, but we have two expert witnesses who are property rights attorneys, and both of them will testify that Spring Ave is a public right of way. Um, there has been some discussion on social media. The eminent domain is a better bet for the town. Well, that sticks in my craw. Why? Why should we pay the fire district for Spring Ave? We have a right of way over that tract of land. The fire district took it, and we need it back. But why would we pay them for it? Um, people are speculating the eminent domain is less expensive. Um, I think if we were to take that tract of land through eminent domain, we would be on the hook for more than the value of the property. The fire district would want severance damages, and that is compensation for the loss of things beyond the, um, property damage. So, they would be asking for money. They'd want to be compensated for loss of exclusivity of, of their beach. So, in the end, um, this is going to be your decision. It's the responsibility of the seven of you to decide what to do. I want you to use your judgment, and don't be, um, unduly influenced by others, by factions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on the list is Ben Weber.
Ben Weber, Three Blossom Court. Also, the chair of the Harbor Management Commission, but I'm here on my own accord tonight. Um, I'd like to speak about item number six. A. Um. And I'd like to pass these out. Pass them down. There should be one for everybody. I sent this in an email, and I just want to reiterate a little bit about what I said. Um, and rescind a little bit of it. So. Take a look at the pictures. I didn't take those pictures. Someone else did. But that wasn't even at high tide. For some ungodly reason, someone decided to put straight pipes in the retaining wall, which, without a thing called, um, check valves. So, now the tide just goes through those straight pipes and floods the entire thing out. So, this proposed ordinance. It was actually Dylan at one of our meetings that said, you know, we're gonna have to address this somewhere ten years down the line. Well, it's not ten years down the line. It's now. That water's all the way up to the fence. So, with that being said, what I said in my email is, if you're going to do a ordinance, which, my own personal belief is that it's unnecessary because the 2008 resolution took care of this. Um, there's no roads to be built out there. Um, when the barrier beaches were wiped out, it was also stated that no one could build on the barrier beach. Ms. Kwamiketsu, they won. Uh-oh. And they were able to build. Barrier beaches are off limits. However, we did mention this. So, if it's gonna be done, it needs to be done correctly. With that being said, the town must not and cannot include from Bay Street to beyond the fence. That must be maintained and repaired as necessary to ensure foot pedestrian traffic in perpetuity. Right now, as it stands, that seawall needs to be addressed. Maybe the seawall needs to be extended to the end of the fence. Check valves maybe need to put in, be put in instead of straight pipes so it doesn't flood out. Regardless, something needs to be done. So, therefore, if you look, I did it nice with red pen. The plats that are included on that drawing are 185, 031 dash one through three, I believe. However, that doesn't include the parking lot and those plats. So, from Bay Street to past the fence, whatever plat numbers are in that lined parking lot need to be excluded from the ordinance at minimum for maintenance and repairs. Whatever needs to be done to ensure that you can get by the fence without having to swim. Other than that, facts, facts are indisputable, okay? Carolyn talked about the money and other stuff. Bottom line, you've been presented facts. You can see them. You can interpret them. These are not theories. Facts. Weigh the facts. Bottom line is, Spring Avenue, for example, that was mentioned, is an unplatted lot. Taxes were never paid on it. So, how much would you have to spend to take that? That's debatable. But ten years of litigation, appeals, all that, weigh the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maurice Devine.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maurice Devine, born and raised, and have lived here in Westerly for nearly sixty years. Resident Duhamel. Perspective counselors, town manager Lacy, Solicitor Conley, town clerk LaBlanc, town sergeant Falcone. Fellow citizens and guests. I appreciate the time to speak this evening, and I'm appearing as a private citizen with an observation on an item of concern to many in our community. This is relevant to item six A in your published agenda for the evening regarding the proposed ordinance and ordinance amendment of chapter 21 of the Westerly Code of Ordinances, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Pass the ordinance. This is something that protects an interest for everyone in town. North End, Ms. Kwamiket, Bradford, Dunn's Corners, wherever. People of all different backgrounds, people of all different political leanings. This is something that should not be political. It's quite plain. Is it needed? Possibly not. There was a decision by a judge decades ago that stated that there would be no roadway, no vehicular traffic, regular vehicular traffic out on Napa Tree Point. This ordinance, I guess, would submit that in case there's any confusion because of distance and separation and time. You want to do what's right and be perceived by you're doing your job in the eyes of the people? Pass the ordinance unchanged. You want to protect the interests of the town of Westerly for decades? Pass the ordinance. You want to make sure that people will come to the table and talk constructively? Nothing will bring them to the table faster than passing the ordinance. Trying to be nice, more studies, more money, more effort. Many people here have raised children. We all know what happens when you try to walk softly and you still can't correct behavior. Set the bar, set the expectation, bring the house down if you have to, and all of a sudden, oh, wait a minute, I didn't mean that. This is not what we meant. Let's clarify this. Let's sit down and talk. The talking that's going on right now is let's do what's reasonable. Let's do what's common sense, as long as it favors one party that is not the general population of the town of Westerly. Protect our interests. Protect the future of the town. Preserve its charm. Pass the ordinance as is. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the people that have signed up on the signup sheet. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Please, uh, come forward and state your name and address.
Jim Tarbox, 52 Riverview Avenue. I'm fully in support of any ordinance that prohibits vehicular access on the sand part of Napa Tree. Um, uh, infrastructure also. Infrastructure, as Mr. Weber stated, um, we have to consider Fort Road, where there's a seawall and where there's a parking lot. But I don't know a single person who wants infrastructure or vehicular access to the sandy part of Napa Tree Point. Where that came from, I don't know. Um, that false flag kind of thing. Um, I understand what they're doing. I'm a longtime member of the Sierra Club, Clean Water Action, and the League of Conservation Voters. I completely understand and respect their position on Napa Tree, on the sand part of Napa Tree. It's a critical, uh, Atlantic coast avian flyway. None of you want vehicles down there. So, any ordinance would have to guarantee us the right from Bay Street along Fort Road to where the fence is that we always have access by foot. And if there needs to be maintenance, that needs to be in there also. I think if you skip over that, leaving the door open. The other thing I want to talk about is the amount of money that we've spent at this point. I went back five councils, looking at meetings, and I stood up here four of the five times basically saying, you're gonna try to do the right thing for the public on rights of ways. You're gonna get sued. Money's gonna become a problem, and you're gonna capitulate. And you're gonna get attorneys that just don't want to fight. So, it's up to you to do the right thing for the citizens of Westerly. And if I might, very briefly, um, Ms. Mandover, did not vote for you, Ms. Mandover, but I've been watching very, very carefully. I've never, ever, with the exception of Ms. Cordio, I have never seen a town counselor do their homework, educate themselves, and represent the people of Westerly the way you have. So, I thought that needed to be noted. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Or an agenda item? Seeing none. Uh, move on to council's response. We have five minutes for the councilor. Anyone like to start? Lafitteira?
I, uh, you know, the original ten of the ordinance probably is no avoid at this point. So, I just try to do the right thing. And, uh, I, I do hear what Mr. Weber and Mr. Tarbox and Mr. Devine were saying. As far as, uh, we do have to, if the water does come up to the gate, we have to leave some sort of avenue in this ordinance where we can, we can guarantee pedestrian access, whether that be raising the seawall, a little bridge, something like that. So I will be cognizant of that. And the other point I wanted to make was something Mr. Devine said. And I've been fascinated by this because it just seems like this case was decided 50 years ago, but, you know, Rhode Island, you know, Rhode Island being what it is. I don't know, suspiciously vague, the Rhode Island court records. But a lot of breadcrumbs, a lot of breadcrumbs popping up. And I'm just going to read something that has been in multiple papers. This is from the Province Journal, something that Mr. Connolly shared with me tonight when we came in. Superior Court Justice Francis J. Keely dismissed the suit, and Mr. Anderson had a right to access through the district controlled property, referring to Napatree Point, but only on foot. No vehicles will be allowed on the beach. So it seems to me that 52 years ago, somebody thought that a judge, judge said that you could access Napatree Point by foot, but not with a vehicle. And kind of seems like that's exactly what we want to do today. And, uh, you know, I hope we, someday a judge makes the same determination that I think some, a judge made 52 years ago. It, like I said, is, it's not case law, but there are a lot of breadcrumbs. They just keep dropping all around me. So I just wanted to share that. That's all.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Councillor Mandover?
I just wanted to say thank you for your vote of confidence in me, Mr. Tarbox. I do appreciate it. Also, Carolyn, I hear what you're saying. I really do. It makes a lot of sense. So, you know, that's something we will think about. We're gonna, we're gonna keep trying to figure out how to solve this issue. But thank you for your words. I actually agree with you there. Ben, Rick, Jim, you know, you know where I stand on this issue. I think that we need to get this resolved quickly. And I'm, you know, I'm definitely for the ordinance. So with a little tweaking here and there, I'm definitely for the ordinance. And, um, yeah, I think that's it for me on that. But thank you again for the vote of confidence. I really do appreciate it.
Anyone else? Councillor Niemeyer?
Yeah, regarding this ordinance, I do want to applaud Councillor LaPietra for bringing it forward. I think it was a really good intention and a really good idea. And even if the point may be moot now, I think it's still important that we pass it to show where we stand and what values this council wants to uphold. It maybe need to be tweaked a little bit, as some folks have noted, and I believe some of that's in the works. But it is important to pass this. And I thank you for coming forward on it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Yello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Caroline, always a pleasure to listen to you. And thank you for the words on the solicitor and his office and how well things are going. And Maurice, always well spoken. And to the point, I appreciate that. And Jim Tarbox. I'm going to get back to Ben. I didn't skip him. Again, well spoken. You hit some key points. And you remind us of some things and plugging along. And I agree, we need to, we need to solidify this in perpetuity. So no future councils have to deal with this again. And then I'll get back to Ben Weber. The few things he mentioned, the, where are you, Ben? Back there? Okay. The three lots and then the parking areas and stuff. That, it was identified last meeting and the Solicitor's Office is working on that. So those have been identified. They just didn't make the cut for tonight's meeting. So again, all good points tonight and good comments. So thank you very much.
Very good. Anyone else? Councillor Shalaba?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking and just kind of reminding us again about Napatree and Spring Avenue and what we need to do to make this right. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll just simply thank Caroline Contrada as well for supporting our Solicitor's Office. You can tell by the amount of work that was done that is contentious. And it's needed to protect the interests of the town. So thank you, Ms. Contrada, for pointing that out. Moving on to item 5, Consent Calendar. 5A, approval of minutes, regular, 8:18:25. This is continued, amended and continued from 9:22:25.
I'm going to make a motion to move the regular minutes to new business. Eight, for, I'm sorry, for 8:18.
I don't think you need a second.
Yeah, we don't, you don't need a motion on that. I'm sorry, just want to move them to new business there.
Okay, that'll be new business. 8A, approval of minutes from 9:22:25.
Motion to approve minutes from 9:22:25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Executive minutes, 9:8:25 that are sealed.
Motion to approve executive minutes, 9:8:25.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, Councillor Yello?
I'll, I'll be, I'll be abstaining for the same reason, and please put that in the minutes. Instead of having to reread it, court knows. I will also abstain.
I'm going to abstain also.
Okay, three have abstained. Councillor Mandover, Councillor Yello, and Councillor LaPietra. Any other comments? Motion has been made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Three abstentions. Minutes are approved. Next, fiscal matters. Resolution authorizing the waiver penalty of late payments, $1,037.99. Resolution authorizing payment to the lower offices of Cameron and Middleman. Litigation matters, $242.25.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Motion made second by Councillor Healy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fiscal matters are approved. Next, resignations and appointments. First is Permanent Housing Committee. Councillor Niemeyer?
The Appointment Subcommittee nominates Colin Penny for a three-year term on the Permanent Housing Committee.
Could you state the name again?
Colin Penny.
Colin Penny is nominated. All in favor of Colin Penny?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Colin Penny.
The Appointment Subcommittee nominates Brian Michael Harrington. Brian Michael Harrington for a three-year term on the Permanent Housing Committee.
Brian Harrington. All in favor of Mr. Harrington?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
The Appointment Subcommittee nominates Seth Logan for a two-year term on the Permanent Housing Committee.
Seth Logan. All in favor of Mr. Logan?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Any others?
The Appointment Subcommittee nominates Stuart Miller for a two-year term on the Permanent Housing Committee.
Stuart Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
The Appointment Subcommittee nominates Benjamin Keep for a one-year term on the Permanent Housing Committee.
That's Benjamin Keep?
Benjamin Keep. Yep.
All in favor of Mr. Keep?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Keep.
And we have no nominations for the planning board.
Good. Moving, moving now to public hearings. 6A, Proposed Ordinance and Ordinance Amendment of Chapter 21 of the Westerly Code of Ordinances prohibiting roadway, sidewalks, and infrastructure in Napatree Point. Discussion and possible action. This public hearing is continued from 9:8:2025.
Make a motion to open public hearing?
It's still continued. So we don't have to do that. Thank you, though. We left off with some questions on the ordinance. How was it written? Did it include lots that are currently paved and used for vehicle access from Bay Street to the, to the fence on Napatree? Was that clarified?
Yeah, the Solicitor's Office has been working on a map and, and some language, I think. But if we want to have the Solicitor comment on it, Mr. President?
Yes, I was referring to Mr. Connolly.
Thank you. So the, at the last council discussion regarding the public hearing, there were questions and
Bill, if you could pull your mic towards you?
Certainly. Questions by the council regarding the deletion of the lots that, for lack of a better term, are are referred to as the pavement properties, the pavement all the way up to the, and Councillor Yello particularly focused on it. An attempt to make sure that what we were identifying to be deleted from the ordinance, we shared a map that I, that we tried to colorize with, and identified what we saw on the map as the pavement area and put those lots in pink. And so in order to exempt those lots from the ordinance, as has been the subject of some public discussion and focused on by Councillor Yello, we would simply exempt those lots. We would just simply delete them from the list of plat, plat and lot numbers that are identified in the ordinance. That's straightforward. Just delete them.
So those lots are provided to us as assesses plat 185, lot 1031 dash 1, which is, which is shown against the fence. Moving away from the fence towards Bay Street is plat 185 lot 0131 dash 2. And then plat 185 lot 0131 dash 3. Appears there's another lot. That's it? Three lots?
Yeah, I believe so.
So the intent is to leave the, from Fort Road to the fence, the existing paved parking lot and travelway, to leave that out of the ordinance. Any improvements within that? Within those areas can be made. Any improvements leading from the fence to Napatree Point cannot be made. Councillor LaPietra?
Oh, I'm back. Okay. Just to talk about, a little bit about the fence. If the water does come up to the gate, I don't know if we want to strictly say, I believe 185 lot 031 dash 1 go, creeps in a little bit past the fence because obviously we would need a bridge or a little something there in 20 years. So I don't think the fence is the hard line. I think it's a little bit past the fence. I would just go with the lot number. I'm not going to try to figure out exactly where it is, but just to.
Appears the fence is on lot 185. Lot 185 lot 031 dash 1.
But we're excluding a little bit past the fence, it looks like, towards Fort Mansfield. Going in that direction. It wouldn't be a hard line at the fence. I believe we're going to leave that whole, that whole area out of the ordinance in case we do need to build a tiny little bridge over there or something, which, you know, this is just, not tying a future council's hands in 30 years is all we're doing.
So there's a conservation easement over this area that we're considering. We're memorializing that with this ordinance. Comments? Councillor Healy?
I just want to address Mr. Weber's concern and have clarification on any type of maintenance or repairs that may be needed if that specific language also needs to go into this ordinance to confirm that.
Councillor Mandover?
I would like to see the original language put back in, all of B, as it, as it was. I think it basically covers everything there. And removal of those three lots is fine. But I think that this covers us, if, if we need to get out there to do any repairs, this, this section B of this ordinance would, would protect us from being able to do it or not. I believe that's the way I'm reading it.
So you're referring to the red line lined out?
Yeah, that whole B. All B should go back to the original as to what it said before.
Councillor Shalaba?
I agree that I think the red line should go back. However, I think part of the problem right now is because of the litigation that we have. It, it's going to come down to, I don't want to say who owns it, but Watch Hill Fire District right now has been taking care of that seawall. So I think putting that back in, I think that's where we're going to get, kind of get into a kind of sticky situation. You know, if, if we, we definitely need to do something about the foot traffic. We definitely need to do something about the seawall. But I think that seawall is going to become something of who owns it, so to speak, because who's going to take care of it? And I think this is kind of making it sound like we do it, but we have to get, we have to get approval from them.
It's kind of, it says except for in the event of sea level rise, right? Or any other act of nature that prevents public access. It wouldn't be like we were going in there just to do repairs, to do repairs. It would be only if there's no access, if it gets wiped out, right? So that we have, we're still going to maintain what we have for access, no matter what.
I'm going to ask Attorney Connolly to clarify that piece of that last sentence.
I'd also like the town manager's opinion on this. This puts jeopardy on the town.
So I know the, the Fire District, as a result of litigation, had a, and I could be wrong on the numbers, either $200,000 or $400,000 grant to repair that section you're speaking about.
Correct.
They lost it as a result, well, the time lapse is a result of litigation, so they have to reapply. And they're also applying for funds to replace the seawall from where, you know, where you can tell where the older section of the seawall is, to redo that whole section of seawall too. So you know, I think they're, from their side of it, they're in agreement with, I mean, obviously to maintain some sort of access there, but so they've been maintaining it. We haven't. They have all along. So I assume they continue to, you know, will continue to do so.
So this wouldn't, this language wouldn't stop the grant process or fixing the seawall?
No, I don't believe so unless you feel the install, we could, I mean, we could apply for grants together to repair these things. So.
Yeah, how could we where they are still able to do what they need to do and we just, we just want to protect our access? That's all we want. And, and how do we do that? In what language?
This is just the sandy area.
It's the fine way it is.
This is just the sandy part of the Napatree Point. This is not the seawall. This is not the paved area.
Correct.
This is just the sandy part.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't think that this.
That, yeah, that. And
Yeah, I think
Fancy it's mentioned in here, the lot.
Besides the lots.
Yeah. So that's.
I think it covers it all then.
So we're just talking about, this is just reassuring everybody that the town has no intent of building a road over the sandy part of the Napatree Point, the conserved area. And on the map, there is some other, which leads me to my other question is, there are some half a dozen lots or so between private property and the state properties and the town property. Kind of in the middle of Napatree Point, you have conserved area and private property is a little mix. And I guess the question as a listener would be, do we leave them in? Do we take them out? I mean, personally, my thought is to take those lots out because the whole intent was to satisfy the conserved area. The conservation areas. To reassure the Watchell Conservancy and the Fire District that the town has no intent of building anything over the conservation area. So there are some private property owners out there along with the state and the town. So, I mean, I'm fine with removing those individual lots from the ordinance and just including the conserved area, the sandy part of the conserved area.
I would think you'd want to leave them in because it's contiguous access all the way to Napatree Point. And we're talking about the area of Fort Road. And we're talking about the area of Fort Road. We're not talking about the ownership of the lots. So I would think it's best to keep Fort Road together and...
I mean, I can go either way on it. The Solicitor doesn't see any problem with leaving them in or then I'm fine with that.
What on the three lots that we've been discussing to take out is already paved, so... And that will need maintenance. So we're taking that out of this ordinance. Three lots. It's not lined out on this, plat 185 lot 311, 185 312, and 185 313, are the three lots. Question for the Solicitor, Chris?
Go ahead.
Attorney Connolly, if we were to take those three lots out and also add back in the red line portion in B, would we be able to pass that ordinance today without having to readvertise? I make a motion, unless you guys want to talk this to death. I'm going to make a motion that we take out Platts 185 lots 1, 2, and 3, and we add back in the red line version. I don't have it in front of me, but here it is, the red line version on section 1B.
I'll second that.
Did you say it again? 31-1, 31-2.
31-3, I'm sorry. And also, and also to add back in section 1, subsection B, 21-1B, add back in the previously red line portion. Mary, you see that? And that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counsel Van Doover. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion. Ordinance passes.
Was that, excuse me, was that just for the amendment and now you're going to vote to adopt it as amended?
It was one motion that included all the...
Do you want to, we can, we can...
Ending it, but into...
We're going to amend it and pass it. Is that fine? Okay.
Good. Very good. Next, item 7, unfinished business rule.
Excuse me, can you just close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for item 6A, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Thank you, Mary. Item 7, unfinished business, rules of procedure to govern the 2426 Town Council, proposed amendments. And they are, item 1, amend rule 7A, liaisons by eliminating appointment subcommittee. Do we take these individually or...?
Go individually, yeah.
Okay, so, 7A1 to amend rule 78, liaisons eliminating appointment subcommittee. This was discussed as an action item of the council and it's before us a month later. I'll open up for a discussion. Counsel Niemeyer.
Yeah, so I would feel like, I'm going to vote no on this. And I encourage my fellow counselors to vote no on this. We had some, you know, growing pains as a subcommittee. And we've shown a lot of growth and promise since then. We have modified our rules. We've professionalized our operation of the meetings. And I think it is a subcommittee that is doing a lot of good work in terms of not only the function of this council, but the function of our town government. I think it's well worth keeping.
Any other comments? Counsel Van Doover.
I agree with Counsel Niemeyer. I think we've done a lot of good work. I personally like the fact that we get to engage the people that are going to be doing towns' business and getting to know them a little bit more in asking the questions and being able to know that we're making the right choices. So I'm a no. I don't want to remove it. I enjoy what I'm doing. I really do. And I think we're doing a lot of good. I think we're getting a lot of things done. And I think we're putting in a lot of good people. And it's a good discussion to have. And it's nice to just do it between three counselors before we bring it forward to everybody else. So I'm a definite no. I really would like to see this subcommittee stay where it's at. Thank you.
Counsel Shalaba.
I was originally going to say, yes, I wanted to get rid of this appointment subcommittee for certain reasons. But recently, in hearing right now from two of the counselors who are on that committee and how they want to keep it just the three, and being on the past subcommittee where it was just the three of us, I think it would probably be beneficial for it to stay. So I'm going to be a no. I've changed my mind.
Counsel Healy.
As the third member of the appointments liaison subcommittee, I also agree with Counsel Van Doever and Counsel Niemeyer. I had this whole thing written up, but I'm not going to bore you. I do want to let you guys know that when I was researching this, I was, I went all the way back to December 27th of 1988. That's as far as I went back. I'm sorry, I didn't go any further. But that is how far this goes back. It's not a new thing. In 2018, though, it was in the minutes that there was a suggestion by Counselor, current Counsel Aello, former Counsel Overton, and former Counsel Gagné about having training for all boards and commissions on ethics as well as the proper way to host, hold, I'm sorry, a meeting. I would like to bring that back. I think that if, it seemed like the complaint really was structure, getting it to be fair and on structure. So ideas on that is let's redo our application process, put a little tab in there so they can put their resumes. We just need guidelines. We need guidelines and we need training. We need to keep this committee asking folks to come in in front of a full council and an audience on camera does not feel like anything more than a barrier for our volunteers. So I also will be voting no on getting rid of this committee.
Counsel Petra.
Glad Mrs. Healy mentioned training. Saves me from waiting until new business. We've already been ordered to do training and we've been told it's not DEI training, but I'm just going to read some of the titles of the training that we were ordered to do. Stage 1, diversity training. Diversity toolkit, your bias is showing. Inclusive mindset, stupid stuff smart people say. Freedom from racism, systemic racism defined, anti-racism because not racist is not enough, and develop tolerance and respect. And whether or not DEI training is warranted, putting that aside, the fact of the matter is, the President of the United States said no more DEI training January 20th through 2025. So by engaging this with the town council or, for that matter, any town official or worker or any employee of the town, we could be violating federal law and we could be jeopardizing federal grants. So this is something that has to be addressed. We have to be in compliance with federal laws. This is no different from...
If I may, Counsel Petra, this is a separate agenda item we can put forward. This isn't about training.
I'll save the rest of it for new business then. And I would also vote to keep this committee alive.
Very good. Counsel Aello.
Yes. Counsel Healy brought up, I think it was the 2018. And there was a specific issue that occurred that raised some concerns. And I'm not going to address it. I'm not going to bring up something that happened years ago. But something had happened and it wasn't during an appointments committee meeting. It was something else that... So there are some issues that were raised and we wanted to identify a couple of things. Now I'd have to go back and actually listen to the meeting to see what exactly was being referred to during that particular meeting she mentioned. Hats off to her for going back to 1988 or whenever it was. But I will, initially, I was of the same mindset to abolish it. And just if the council wanted to interview, we can interview them right here. But I too have also been on an appointments committee and it can work well if the appointments committee has defined by themselves how they want to proceed. We used to, we spent no more than five, maximum 10 minutes per person, max, preferably like five. Because you already have the application. Previously, we talked about resumes and all that. You're getting into a lot of stuff. And resumes can be made to look really nice, but you really want that face-to-face. And that's the purpose of interviewing when you want to interview. I've seen some resumes that the person can walk on water and not true. So got to be careful of that. And the face-to-face is much, much more important. And we did that in the military as well too, and we did some interviews. So again, I'm going to support the members of the appointments committee, Counsel Niemeyer, in keeping this. I'm not going to support abandoning it. And just, I think from here on, it's going to be a lot smoother. So, thank you.
Thank you. Everyone has spoken. I'll put my two cents in. I'm also reversing what I initially thought would be a good idea. I think the committee does a lot of work. I've been on that committee since, 2002 I was on the council and, you know, 20 years or more ago. And we worked with the two different parties and independent, if there was one, so that there was a broad spectrum of questions or concerns that were met. It's, the face-to-face meetings are always best, but I would also give deference to an appointment person that has served on the committee for a number of years and been a valuable member of the town of Westley's government. So, but with that said, I'll completely defer to the appointments committee and what style that you guys wish to go by. And having a hard set of rules set by the seven councils, I don't think is in anyone's interest. I think it's better to have your own flow. It means to get the best candidates. It was my position to choose who was on this committee. And I thought this was a good spectrum of the town. So we get that diversity in the candidates. And I think it's happening. And I think it's working, so.
Proceeding, Mr. President, I think since everybody has spoken against this, that you can just move on and be no action taken. Nobody supports it.
I think it's important to vote for something like this rather than, say, by consensus, so... Yeah, let's just vote. So, I don't know how you say negative vote, but anybody in favor of rule 7A changing? Do I have a motion to...
I'll make a motion to keep the appointments committee as it is.
Keep it as it is.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Petra. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The liaison committee is still together. Item 2, amend rule 8D, appointments. We don't have to go through that, do we? It's a moot point at this point.
I'll make the... Make a motion to keep it as it is.
Second.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion?
I said, I made the motion to keep the procedure as it is.
And I seconded that motion.
This was put in because if you changed the first one, if you adopted the first one, you're going to have to adopt the second one.
Okay, so we're not advocating for the full council to get these? Okay. Motion made by Counsel Aello, seconded by Counsel Petra. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion with...
President, I ask that the next one be continued along with item 8A. The documents I submitted weren't attached to the agenda.
Men rule 9A.
That's what I'm saying.
Do it one at a time.
This is what I'm saying. All right, that's fine. Continue this to, make a motion to continue this to the next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. I think it's a good idea to discuss whatever issues there are. This is put forward in our agenda setting meeting with Counsel Petra, Counsel Shalaba, myself. It was felt that the council wanted to have this on an agenda.
It was at my request, Mr. President, so I'm asking for the council's indulgence to do that since the documents I submitted were not provided to anyone on this or a couple of other matters.
Discussion?
Yeah, continue discussion.
Do you have the documents with you tonight? I mean, I...
I thought they were going to be provided to the council tonight.
We got seven people here. I'd really like to get this over with. We have, I mean, I got them in an email somewhere if you want to reference them. But I mean, I think we've waited long enough. We haven't had a full council in about four meetings. And I think we kind of know where we're at on this, but I would like to go forward, but I don't want to... Looks like Sean wants to say something.
The documents in question, I believe, were forwarded to the entire council, weren't they? The email went to the whole council. The document you submitted went to the entire council. Well, there's a serious miscommunication then. There was, I wanted them included on the agenda, but I'll be much more clear next time. And I didn't, I mean, those are informational, but I don't know if everybody looked at it, but we don't have them in front of us either.
So... We've read them, but they're not attached to the agenda is what he's saying. He would have preferred them attached to the agenda. But I know the council's seen them. If we've all read them, that's the question, you know? We have had an opportunity to read them if we wanted to, but...
So motion is on the table to continue this, seconded by Counsel Niemeyer. I'm fine if you guys want to extend it, but this was put forward mainly because of Counsel Petra making certain that your voice be heard. If you need, if Counsel Aello, if you need more documents on, you need to provide those to the manager and then we'll get them in. But they came in, just so the public knows that there's a cutoff at 12 o'clock on Thursday for anything posted. That's the Open Meetings Act requirements for 48 hours. So that's why they weren't in this, but they were...
Correction, they were provided before 10:00 AM, however, and that's not the OMA. That's our rule. They have to be provided by the OMA in 48 hours. No, the agenda has to be posted in the later 48 hours early. But they were provided in time, but there was a mix-up in the communication. I didn't make it clear. I'm not slamming anybody. But I'm just asking and I'll provide them.
Yeah. If it's that important, you should also make me aware of it. I've got a busy day normally. So I'm not looking at my emails or my town emails.
Okay.
I got work emails.
Just a miscommunication, that's all.
Yeah, so I'm telling you publicly, if you have something, you should make it to bring it to my attention. I know you just said you give it to the clerk, but she's not going to put it forward.
You're kind of making...
Out of respect for Counsel Aello, if you need more time, we'll take more time. I'm okay with that, just putting it out there. I don't...
I said that as well, Counsel Van Doever. I'm just also saying that this was moved forward as quick as we could for Counsel Aello.
Are we still having a little bit of discussion about it?
It's still in discussion.
Okay, because the only thing I was going to say is the appointments committee meetings have their meetings on Wednesday. And by the time they finish their meetings, they may not get the information to us until Thursday morning. And so that may be a hindrance as far as the draft agenda, you know, getting it prior to the actual agenda.
I don't think Draft Agenda is on.
We're not, that's...
It's not even on here.
We're doing executive.
All right, I'll go.
Gender referral list.
I'm going to say this. Bill did put it, I saw the timestamp. It was 9:59. He did submit it in time. He didn't specifically ask for it to be on the agenda, but he did submit it in time. It could have been on the agenda, but that point aside, we've all seen it. We all kind of have an idea. We've been thinking about this for six meetings now. We find seven people here. With all due respect, I'd like to get this over with and talk about it tonight, but obviously I'm one vote, so.
Counsel Healy.
Thank you. Is this, I know, I can't address another counselor, but if this is something that somebody, can we talk about it, about what's in those documents? And maybe putting everything verbally on the table, is that an option for us to be able to move forward? If you are... Is that an option for us to be able to move forward if you are given the time to explain?
You know what? I, I've accommodated others the past few months.
Question, I'm just trying to see how to get this.
I'd, I'd rather.
As quick as possible, because every meeting, we've pushed at least one thing to the next. I'm just trying to keep things.
Understand, and I know, and we, and we could have voted on other things when other counselors were missing, but we, but we.
These are, these are the council rules of procedure, that's why I thought a full house was needed.
No, and, and I agree, and that's why I supported other things. So, and I supported postponing some other, continuing other things because of that. My gosh, I'm asking.
Motion is on the table to continue, seconded by Council Neemeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it, we're continued. Item 8A, oh, I'm sorry. Item eight, suspend town council rules of procedure. Rule 9D, council operations to discuss and consider the following items, 8A, 8B, 8C, and 8D. Do you have a motion to suspend?
Clarification before the motion. If I make the motion to continue 8A, these session minutes, do we need to suspend the rules to even make that motion? We do. Okay, all right, I'll, I'll make the motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Council Shalaba, all in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? Rules are suspended. Item 8A, procedure for adoption of executive session minutes as established by the town clerk. Discussion and possible action.
Mr. President, in the interest of having a good discussion around this, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to our next meeting and also request that the town clerk provide a memo outlining the strengths of the procedure which she established so that we can reference it as we argue for or against, depending on which side people fall on.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the continuance.
Now, I missed, now we're going to push 8A, too?
Well, why don't you stay in the room more often? Come on.
All right, let's push everything. We'll, we'll have a big meeting on the 20th. I'm going to vote not to push it, by the way, but whatever.
Other discussion, I, I thought this, this was a, a way to bring accountability to it. I mean, the clerk can write what she's been telling us, but there, there's been in the, in past councils and probably ones that I've served on, that the executive minutes have been in the public domain, and there's been no means to determine whether or not, where it came from. So this would, the, the clerk's method now has complete accountability of where each set of minutes is, has a, has a name on it and has, has a, a return. So for those reasons, I thought Mr. Blank was really addressing a concern that, you know, really jeopardized the town, so. A memo to that effect? Yeah, we can ask for a memo.
Could, could we have further discussion on this, or?
Oh yeah, sure, I'm sorry.
I, I was just gonna, I mean, I, I would like to try to address it tonight. I know we're going to push it for, for the vote at least, but I will say this, I walked in today, I had something about the Columbus Day Parade. I don't even know what this was. I mean, I don't have time to read any of this stuff when I come here, so it's going to be very hard to, to also read executive session minutes. I mean, I, I understand that Mary is in charge of these minutes and she needs to protect them, but at the very, also, we have to understand that we need time to read these minutes, there are minutes, and, and sit down and, and go over them. So I'm hoping that maybe a compromise would be, because if we're afraid of them getting out in the public, how about doing what we, we tried before in the town council, we had somebody who wasn't too tech savvy, I believe, back then, and I know the school committee does it this way, or at least did for a while. What if we got the executive session minutes password protected? That way, we would still be able to sit at home, read our minutes. There, there are minutes as well, but Mary would also still have protection of the minutes. They wouldn't be left in somebody's car or somebody's house or something. I think it would satisfy both sides of this, and that's just a compromise I was thinking of that hopefully works for everybody. I don't know if it would work for Bill or Mary, but it seems to me it would, it would address both of your issues, so.
If there's a way to track it, IT would have to have an opinion on this, and maybe that's a good reason to postpone this, have, have town manager look into this, but it would be, it would have to be tracked so that you could tell, you know, where, where the minutes went, if they were forwarded to another, another group, because that's, that's the problem. That's, there's so much liability in town. If, if something gets, gets, gets out and we're not, you know, it's not going to come from us, it's going to come somehow, then you have to have accountability. Who, who took it?
The issue with that, and that works, I'm not going to say it won't, but the issue is you can screenshot the minutes, share them wherever you want, you can print them, there, there's all kinds of, I mean, I understand it doesn't work, and I'm not even disagreeing with anybody up here, but if the minutes are Mary's, nobody has 10 minutes during the week to stop in here and read the minutes? I mean, you can certainly do it during the week, I mean, prior to the meeting, I mean, by all means.
We're in this, this building just about four days anyways, so.
I see many of you in the building throughout the week, so there's definitely a certain. Lots of people live right around the corner, so. I'm not, again, I'm disagreeing, I just don't, we, we dealt with this before with IT, and it was concluded there is not a way that you can share them by way of computer electronically to not have some jeopardy, right? Someone can screenshot them, someone can take a picture of them, you can print them, you can.
I'm sorry, I've, I missed the executive session minutes where we had the nuclear colds in them and we solved world hunger. What are we protecting? I, I'm sorry.
And keep in mind, these executive sessions, they're recorded also. So if there's ever a question on the minutes, they're all recorded.
That's, that's what I can't understand. These are writ, written translations of the recording, which is the exact meeting, yet we're fighting or, or debating over what the words are. Yes, Council Healy?
When this was first brought up in the very first executive session meeting, my suggestion was to take the first 15 minutes before the executive session for all of us to sit down and read it. It was not, it was not taken well. The only other thing branching off of that, you mentioned the school committee, Dylan, they do their executive session first. I, I, I know, I know that we don't want to do that, I know, but, I mean, we have to be able to, even if we're getting here 10 minutes early. We pumped our, our meetings to 6 o'clock, used to be 5:30. Go back to the previous council and pretend you got to be here for 5:30? I don't know how else, I mean, we, we live in 2025. The digital version realistically is going to get out. I get it, I get that we're not, you know, NSA, I get it, but like, we still have a responsibility for this town to hold things in confidentiality, whether it is something as small as, I don't know, whatever, but it, it's still the point. I know there are a lot of things that we talk about that if it got out to the wrong person, that's it, done. And then all of the bills that we've been paying for a solicitor, gone, bye, see ya. So like, we have to do this smartly. It's, it, 10 minutes tops, guys, like, we can really do this.
Thank you, Council Shalaba.
I agree with what Mary LeBlanc wants to do with the minutes for us. I understand we've had password protection before, but password protection can still be shared. The password can be shared, the files can be shared. There, there's so many different things that can happen. At the end of the day, it's Mary's neck on the line if this, if the executive session minutes get out there to the wrong hands. And we shouldn't do that and put her into that situation. There's no reason why we can't take 10, 15 minutes to read the information. If it's something that people feel like they need more information, then you know what? Either you vote no or you abstain. I mean, everything can go back to looking at the video and listening to the audio at the same time. So, you know, I'm not going to put Mary's job in jeopardy, I'm not, this is what she believes is the best thing. We've had issues in the past. Let's just support our staff, support her, and we can get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We, we have a motion to continue? Did you want us?
I just wanted to add my reasoning. I think tonight we've heard a little bit of people talking past each other and sort of not addressing each other's stuff, and I think part of what can be fixed by that is having a good reference document that we can really turn to and say, this is what this position is, that's what that position is. And, and I feel like that's going to make the discussion we're having up here a lot stronger.
So we need a reference document, in your opinion?
Yes.
Have we all spoken about the continuance?
I made the motion, but I didn't speak. Well, you did, all right, sorry. So you made a motion and you seconded, all right. The, again, I've got a whole one-page document on this and, and, and a legal memo on the process, and unfortunately, some people have turned this into what Mary wants or what Bill wants. It's not that, it's about the process and, and things that have worked and can work. And people throwing this thing around where people have violated the trust and things have out, ended up out there in the public, there's no evidence, there's no proof of any of that. And if something did, it's not the town clerk's job that's on the line. That's ridiculous. And, and another point is, we've been elected, seven counselors are elected. There's a certain trust level that is to be given to the counselors so they can do their job properly and well. And delaying meetings or delaying the start of an executive sessions, I, I don't think is a smart idea. And it also opens, if anybody starts discussing it, then it opens up the door to an OMA violation. If that gets discussed, it does. So, again, I go, I'm going to fully support continuing it. Again, this was actually my request to be on here. So again, I like those documents and, and the request of Council Neemeyer to have the, the written memo provided and everybody can see it, and we'll talk about it all at the next meeting.
Right.
Thank you.
If I could also add to the motion to continue, are we asking the clerk to defend her job, her position, her protection of the town? I'd like the counselors, whoever wants to write their concern about how they would provide accountability.
That's.
And if you don't want to do it, you don't have to do it, but if you want to be convincing, I want to see how are you going to, how are you going to guarantee accountability?
Excuse me, you just indicated that to protect the clerk's job. What are you talking about?
I'm not going to debate this here, Mr. ALO.
You just said it. I'm asking for clarification, Mr. President.
You're not getting it.
Not getting it.
You're not getting it.
So you're just spouting stuff off?
If you want to characterize it that way, so be it.
So you're making accusations to say that clerk's job is in jeopardy? What are you talking about?
Why do you disagree with it?
Why would any of this put her job in jeopardy?
If, if, if we.
You're making this about her, it's not about her, it's about the process, Mr. President. It's about the present, it's about the process. Point of order.
You don't have the microphone right now.
This is not, this is completely against our rules. We have them right in front of us, printed out, it's in our agenda today. It's going completely against our rules.
Don't join the club. Yeah, you, you interrupted well, too, so I just asked for clarification, Mr. President. If you can provide it, great, if not, then fine.
Thank you for your thoughts. Motion to continue is on the table, any, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I'll vote no as well. 3-3, the continuance is, is, is not continued.
Well, I'll change my vote to continue, we're fine, yes.
Mr. Dylan is, Mr. Still a Peter has changed his vote, so we are, we're two. 8A is continued. 8B, resolution authorizing change order six to the contract for the Bowling Lane Drainage and Roadway Improvements Project of $370,000. Discussion and possible action. Town manager?
Yeah, I can go through this. So this is, the reason it says Bowling Lane continuation, because it's basically the same rates. DeAmber is offering the same rates as they offered on Bowling Lane as they did on Colonial Drive. They're also offering the same rates on Weekapog Road and the next resolution, which is the water line at the transfer station. So the Weekapog Road main, some questions were sent by Council ALO today regarding some, you know, questions he, he wanted answered regarding it. So I'll go through his questions, but this is to replace, I'll give an overview of this, to replace 1,200 feet of 12-inch water line on Weekapog Road. They've had three water main breaks in the location in the past four and a half months. They fixed, actually, they, they had three, one of them broke twice right after they fixed it. The problem is the cast iron line that's in the roadway is deteriorating, it's becoming brittle. It's still fine thickness and everything, it's becoming brittle because of the salt water, because the water line's underwater. When you dig, it's underwater, it's in salt water. The water line was put in in the 60s at some point. Cast iron, we have cast iron water lines in town that are 125 years old and perfectly fine. One of the questions came up is they, is to why is a cast there? That's just what they put in, that was replaced in the 60s. They used to be a two-inch, two-inch galvanized line that ran down Weekapog Road that was replaced in the 60s with a 12-inch cast iron line that completes a loop through Weekapog and up Atlantic Avenue, so it's a loop that circles around. As a result of the damage they've had, the damage, the four breaks, or three breaks, one was twice in the last four and a half months, they've shut off a section of water line in front of the, the docks. The week, when you come over the Breachway Bridge, you take a left to go up Weekapog Road, that section there, they, they've shut off a section that doesn't have any impact on any homes because it, it's an emergency repair. They were going to go in and repair it, so their records indicate, the water department's records indicate there was still about 600 feet of cast water line. Back in 1993, the state came in, if you go up Weekapog Road further where the water is on each side of the road, there's a culvert that goes under the roadway. The state replaced the culvert back in 1993 because they're responsible for the water. As a result of that, the water line used to go right through the middle of the culvert. They replaced the water line from the Dunn's Corner side of the culvert, around the new culvert and down, the record showed it was about 600 feet of water line. So what the water department did, we originally had a price from them to replace 600 feet of water line at about $160,000, and the water department went out and did some test holes all the way back to that culvert to determine where the PVC line ended in the old cast line, and they determined it's not 600. The records were wrong, provided by the state, and this 1,200 feet of cast line's still there. So this is an emergency repair that has to get done because the water lines are brittle. They can't turn on this 600-foot section of line, which completes the loop, until the section is repaired. So that's kind of the gist of it, to go under DeAmber's contract under the same footage, the same cost per foot, which is why you're looking at $370,000, and the funding is available in the water department's current budget for that. So to, I kind of explained a lot of it, I'll just go through the questions that Council ALO had. He, one of them he had, the underground utilities inspected prior to the road being paved. They do not inspect the underground utilities, all they go is by their records to what's under the roadway and how old they are, and they base it on how many breaks they have in an area as to the condition of the line and they have it inspected. So based on the line only being 60 years old, they did not have any issues before this. They only assumed there was 600 feet of cast line there, which they knew was there by their records, which turned out now to be 1,200 feet. Inspection reports, photos, there's, there's no inspection report photos other than what I just told you. They have all the documentation from 1993, where they replaced the culvert. PVC line was repased, replaced down around past the culvert by the state. Council ALO asked for a signed letter stating the reasons the pipe was replaced prior. I think I've explained, it's, it's, it's actually a failure of the line. They didn't, is the cost includes requested amount 370, does it include repaving? They're not, the, the line is going in the breakdown line, breakdown lane of the roadway. There's about two and a half feet of roadway that is going to be disrupted on the edge that they are going to correct. If in the events of that, is included in that, that is included in that. If they were to have to go mill and overlay the whole section, which that's not the plan because it was just done a year ago, it would be an additional probably $120,000, but that's not. So the paving replacement, three-inch overlay in the area they're doing is included in the $370 contract, $370,000 contract.
Thank you.
So it is actually, again, it's an emergency repair. You know, well, 600 feet is emergency repair because we have that section shut down. The other 600 feet, you're almost crazy to not replace the additional 600 feet. So it's done. It's all getting done in PVC. The salt water has no impact on it. And then it's good for, you know, however many more years, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, just emphasize the importance of knowing what our underground utilities are like because we're fortunate that it's only impacting the little side, side part of the road and doesn't go down the middle of the travel lane.
Unfortunately, this is the nature of the business. What's underground, built 60 years ago, is not always known. But this is good. This will provide a brand-new water line under a refurbished Bowling Lane Drainage project. So this is a good, good thing. Motion made. Seconded. Any other discussion? Councilor Aiello? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Moving on to eight C, resolution authorizing change order number seven to the contract for the Bowling Lane Drainage and Roadway Improvements Project, $329,000. Discussion and possible action. Town manager?
So this is, this is similar. This is under the same footage contract. This has been probably two and a half years in the works. This has been under design. The well at the transfer station is contaminated, as one would imagine, because it's pumping from the ground on which the, we have garbage piled up in. So it's not, you can't drink it. It's used for bathroom and it's used for, but there was no fire suppression at the transfer station at all. It's kind of surprising. Back when they did the DPW building, they didn't extend it up to allow fire suppression. But two and a half years ago, we engaged in a consultant to come in and design the water line going up there. The, and they just finished it. And we're trying to get it done this season because we have a permit to go under the culvert of the drainage, the wetland areas, right when you go through the gate. And that's crucial that we have to get that done within the season because of the permitting. And again, DeAmber is often the same. We anticipated, to give an idea, we anticipate this was about a $900,000 job when they originally quoted this. And it's only coming in at 329, which is a huge benefit. So this extends it, just to let you know, the water line ends at the DPW building. This will continue it all the way up to the transfer, the metal building. It'll have yard hydrants along the way, where one water into the bathroom area in the building that's where the office area is, where the scale house is. The old animal shelter, run water into that domestic water. We'll eliminate the contaminated well that's there. And again, the 329,000 is within their, coming out of the transfer station side of the budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Niemeyer. Discussion? Councilor Lepitra?
So in essence, this is $329,000. I have a bubbler down the dump. Is that what, is that what a ball is down to here? $329,000?
You get a water bubbler?
Yeah.
Is that what we get out of it?
You can drink out of the water?
We can flush the toilet. We're contaminated with water still, right? So...
But it allows fire suppression is key. And we did have a fire in a dump trailer a couple of years ago. And there's no, there's no water.
You have a pond isn't water?
Yeah. So you can pump it out of the pond. I guess there's plenty of water there.
I don't know. It seems like a lot. I know that we're going to do this anyway, but I never really understood why we spent so much money to get a water fountain down the dump. But whatever, I'll go for it. Okay.
Discussion. Yes. Continued discussion, Councilor?
I just, I just want to have, I just have one question. It says also for future use, sprinkler insulation. Is that inside sprinkler for fire?
If we're required in the building, because right now we're getting some quotes to, for the building, the roof is shot in the building. If we're required, we're not. But if we're, because we're grandfathered in, to put some sort of sprinkler system with inside the containment area of the building, that will be, they'll be, the water line's big enough to supply that whole area with a sprinkler system.
And you think that's a wise choice that we do this?
Yeah. If we don't have to do a sprinkler system, I don't know that, I mean, I think we wouldn't because it'd have to be a dry system because the building's not heated. It'd have to, it'd be very expensive. But as of right now, we don't have to. But the size of the water main going up will allow water for whatever future use is needed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Healy?
Couple of questions. On the first change order, it says what account it's coming out of. The second one that we're on right now, it just has the account number 0900390880. Do you happen to know where that's coming from?
The first change order, actually, the number, that should have been six because six, we originally did a change order for the 600 feet of water line. And now we've discovered it's 1,200 feet of water line. We did all the testing. So that turned in, because it must say amended in there or something? Does it say amended?
No. But it, but it says that it's the allocated funds in the pipeline rehabilitation account.
That's the water, that's the water side.
So that...
That's the water department side for Weekapog Road.
Okay, so then...
So the transfer, the transfer station side is coming out of, that's their...
0900?
Yep. That's transfer station account. That's not water. That's transfer station.
All right.
The Weekapog one is coming out of the Weekapog, out of the water department side.
Okay.
Pipe rehabilitation.
And then just, I had gotten a lot of questions because of the title. So I just, the title having it be that it's Bowling Lane. I had gotten a lot of people that were worried that we were going to have to restart or something. And I was trying to...
No, it's just because you're extending the contract, the existing, because they're extending their pricing under the contract we had for Bowling Lane.
Okay.
Then it's an incidentum. That's...
Okay.
The solicitor currently reviews that, and that's by his recommendation. He said, yeah, this is...
No, absolutely. I completely understand. I just wanted to make sure that I was getting it out loud for people. Thank you. I think that's it.
Thank you. I have the same question. This can be funded out of this, this account?
Transfer station account, yeah. It's new infrastructure to the transfer station. So it's coming out of the transfer station account.
But this is, advertises Bowling Lane Drainage.
It's an, it's an extension of the Bowling Lane contract. It's an addendum to the Bowling Lane contract because that sets the pricing. That sets the per foot pricing. So the addendum clearly stays that it's for the transfer station water line. I know it's confusing, but that's the original contract. We got the pricing from DeAmber on that we're extending it off of. So it's for pricing only. That's all. It's per foot linear pricing. They've given us the same pricing that they did for the Bowling Lane project. They did the same thing with Colonial Drive. Same thing. It was an addendum to the Bowling Lane contract. Not paid for out of anything to do with Bowling Lane funds. Actually, that is coming under budget, which is a good thing, so.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Eight C is approved. Item eight D, RID 2026 Outdoor Recreation Grant Program. Discussion and possible action. One is Rhode Island DEM, grant application for improvements to the Lewis J Similory Sports Complex. Discussion and possible action.
Can I explain?
Yes, please.
So it's the same. It's a grant that we apply for. It has to go to a public hearing, which we're asking for. This is just to be ordered advertised. But this is two grants, Similory 125 and Bradford Recreation Complex 500,000. So just everyone's clear. It's, but we're just looking to get it advertised. And again, the public hearing is just basically a formality. We have to do, you have to check the box for the grant application.
Okay. So, so as Councilor Aiello suggested, item D two, Rhode Island DEM, grant application for the development of 15 Church Street, currently being referred to as the Bradford Recreational Complex. Discussion and possible action. Also to be ordered for advertising on a public hearing for 10/20/25.
Motion to order on both advertise for public hearing on 10/20/25?
I'll second.
Motion made. Second, Councilor Healy. Discussion?
Do, I want this done. This is, I want it done. But I'm, we've pushed a lot of things to October. So are we, do we have enough time to get all of this? This is a public hearing. Don't we have another public hearing coming up? And then we just pushed like two other things over and that's nothing on our agenda backlog? I'm totally, I get it. I 100% get it. But...
These, these won't be contested or controversial.
Okay.
We can consider the other ones and maybe move them around. But I understand your urgency to get on the, on the list.
And Sean, both of these are, are grants of monies that we're looking to get.
Funding that we'll be getting. That's correct.
So we have a motion to advertise or schedule advertising for a public hearing on 10/20/25 for items D one and D two. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
D one and D two are moved forward for advertising. Moving to number nine, communications and reports.
We got the...
Still, we have the minutes.
The minutes, eight eighteen.
Thank you. Should have written that down. So we moved item eight A, regular minutes from eight eighteen twenty-five to new business. Councilor Lepitra, you asked for that?
Yes. I have an amendment, and then I would like to add something. It has to do with council's response in the, in red. And I'll read, responding to Council Vice President Shalaba's, Shalaba, Town Manager, Lacy stated that at the request of the town council. I know I didn't request it, and I know the town council never took a vote. So I would, I just asked to switch the town council to Councilor Healy, if everybody's okay with that. Okay? Right here. And then, and then at the end of this, after it says he stated the council set up for each council member, yeah. I might need that back. He stated that the council set up for each council member to view the five short videos, but noted the training for the council is not mandatory. That's, that's good. I would just like to add the titles of the, of the five training modules that we were given. And I'll read them off again for the record here.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
We can't do that because as we discussed in the agenda setting meeting, they weren't, they weren't mentioned at that meeting. Those titles were not mentioned and only things that were mentioned can be put into the minutes.
Well, we could do it this way, or I could ask to add to these for the record, and we could have this discussion one more time when we have these minutes come before us. So if you want to do that, then I'm going to add, I'm going to read these and add these to the...
Well, just...
Procedurally, they're not on the tape. So...
Well, two of them were.
We cannot add things that were not on the tape.
All right. So we, so can we take a vote to see if, if the council would like to? And I'm only adding to, only asking to add the titles because I think the minutes were a bit vague. We didn't know what, what videos we were referring to. And I'm just adding the titles of the videos. That's all. No discussion on whether or not they were DEI or not, just adding the titles. That's all. So I'd like to make a motion to just add the titles. That's all.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion second is discussion. Councilor Healy?
Mr. Manager, when we got these, when we got these videos, I believe it was in an email or this is an evolving thing. If something comes up that might help us, then it would be put on our, our feed on there. Is that, I mean, is this an evolving workshop style training?
I apologize. I was half listening to Bill.
It's okay.
And you, but, but, but you're asking me, is the, am I clear? The, after the videos that were sent, you're saying, can you still go on and use, watch other?
No. Well, yes, we can't like let the public know that, that there's thousands of videos that we can go and access on everything. But my specific question is, I was under the impression that although we did get these first five, that if other things came up, that HR thought, oh, hey, that, that might be beneficial, that it would be also added on to.
But if there's something requested by the council that, hey, can we get a training on X, Y, Z, like we can have them try to come up something to add to your library box.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, I'm sorry. I don't mean to jump ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, if I heard right, I think Councilor Lepitra is just asking to identify, I think, the five training modules that the manager referenced during the meeting. I think he's just asking to identify the titles of them.
That's all.
And, and just as a reminder, I mean, the last council, we did, actually, is an email from Councilor Shalaba that we added to the minutes that were not discussed at a meeting. But we added them anyway. So it's been done. Now, whether it's right, wrong, or different, I don't know. You can ask the solicitor for, for guidance. But I think that's, I think that's, if I heard it right, he's just asking to list the titles of the five training modules that the manager was referring to that HR had put together.
With no further comment? If you, if you listed the five titles and without a description that they weren't mentioned, these may be the five titles. Is that, is that fit the, what you're looking for? Or do you want to just beat it up in the new business?
I didn't mention all. I did mention, I did believe, I did mention one by name at that meeting. I didn't mention all five. All I would like to do is add the titles to the minutes with no further comment, no, no commentary on whether or not it was DEI training or...
Quiet motion, Mr. President. Is, is one of the titles actually in the minutes or just to add that document by reference?
I'd rather just add just by reference. Saying none of the titles are in the minutes.
No.
So, no, I hear that. So he's not asking for that to be included. He's just asking, I think, to include that document as a, as a reference in the minutes. So I think that's what he's asking.
That is what I'm asking, yes.
Why can't that just be put into the minutes of, of today of 10/6 instead of 8/18 because it wasn't referenced in 8/18?
We could.
As the process would be, we'd always be massaging, changing the minutes to equal what we're trying to say.
Right, right.
If it's not on the tape, then it shouldn't be in the minutes.
Mr. President, if, can we get a, some advice from the solicitor as to whether or not it's, it's legal?
I think we've already been advised of that. I don't know what else, what else can we say. But it goes to reason, Mr. Aiello, that, Councilor Aiello, that if it's not on the tape, which is something referenceable, and you read the minutes and it doesn't match, what, what are the minutes for?
We could do it another way.
I'd rather do it another way.
We'll do it another way then. What I'm going to do is, the discussion, for the discussion of these minutes...
All right. So how about we withdraw that motion? I'll withdraw my second.
Are you going to withdraw?
I withdraw. I'm still got the amendment, the amendment to change town councilor to Councilor Healy, correct? Do you want to vote on that part right now? The request of the town council, that should be at the request of Councilor Healy. And then I'm going to withdraw, I'm going to withdraw the, I didn't make a motion for that?
The only motion I had was that the titles of the five training videos be added to the August 16th minutes.
I would, I withdraw that. And I make a motion to change, at the request of the town council, to at the request of Councilor Healy. That's my motion.
Motion to change the minutes to reference Councilor Healy.
Second.
Second by Councilor Healy. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we approve the minutes now? Or is there more changes?
No, no more changes. But I am going to, I'm going to add something to the record, Mary.
Should we, should we approve the...
I think you're adding, he's adding them to the discussion of these.
Yeah, before we approve the minutes. Bill, Bill was following me here. All right. So, so what I'd like to do is, as part of this discussion, I would like to add this for the record, Mary. And I'll read it off. Stage one, diversity training. Diversity toolkit, your bias is showing. Inclusive mindset, stupid stuff, smart people. See where you get it. I'm going to, I'm going to give you this. I want to add this as part of the official record.
For tonight's minutes.
For tonight's minute, Chad.
Do I have a motion to approve the 8/18/25 regular?
Motion to approve 8/18 as amended to, to switch the name.
Motion made. Second by Councilor Aiello. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Moving now to item nine, communications and reports. Nine A liaison reports. Does anyone like to report? Yes, Councilor?
Yes. The 250th Commission met earlier this month to discuss a potential budget for their, you know, celebration of our semi-qucentennial as a nation. Tonight, they are meeting to put that budget together, and they would like to get our, our agenda relatively soon to potentially give us a presentation on what they would like to do and what it may cost.
So, so you, you wish the 250th Committee come to the town council?
Yes. I'd like to hear the results of their meeting tonight to get into the specifics. But I will be relying if they are prepared to make that presentation.
Very good. Councilor Shalaba?
I have two. One, the Westerly Library on Wednesday, the eighth URI Master Garner presentation regarding dahlias will be presenting at the library at 6 o'clock. And then coming up, the end of this month, October 30th, the Ocean And then coming up, uh, the end of this month, October thirtieth, the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce is going to have Men of the Ocean Community Calendar Reveal at the Granite Theater at six o'clock. And then on November fifth at six o'clock, they're going to have the twenty second annual Athena Awards honoring Danielle Cheeseborough at Lake of Isles.
Thank you. Council Van Dover?
I know I'm not the liaison. There is no liaison for the planning board, but I thought there was a few things that we could update the public with. Um, first of all, Venice had, had put in a, a permit for an, uh, an extension. They asked for an additional one year extension. They're having trouble with permits. Um, and this is the second time that they have requested an extension. Uh, the extension was granted. Um, and then also South Point Commons, which is the Franklin Avenue Wells Road, I'm sorry, Wells Street, uh, development. They also came in and asked for an extension. Um, this is also their second extension. It was sold, the, the land was sold to someone else and they have to close on credits for putting up low income housing. And the motion was approved. And one other thing, um, Walmart is, uh, also removed, is removing truck bays to, to the back of the building. Um, they're adding thirty two hundred square feet for storage and online spaces for delivery. They're going from thirteen spaces to thirty three spaces, uh, to the front left of the building. The loading docks are going to go from twelve to five loading docks. This will help online pickup and they're just re, going to be reconfiguring the parking spots and that was also approved. Um, I, I would like to make a request that, um, Counselor Nehmeyer talked about the multicultural meeting that was, that was had, please?
Sure. Uh, so they had a meeting, um, I forget the specific date, but it was in the last week or so. They had made a motion in previous months, uh, to condemn the use of racial language in, uh, interviews for town committees. That vote had been taken improperly. Um, the solicitor might be able to talk a little bit more about it, uh, than I can, but, uh, they had to rectify that vote. Um, or nullify it, uh, and they chose to conduct the vote again and vote unanimously to, uh, affirm the original vote. Uh, so that vote was taken. And forwarded on to the special assistant attorney general.
Any other, uh, liaison reports? Hearing none. Moving to town council, nine twenty two twenty five.
Okay, I'll go first then. I'd like to address a letter from the school committee. Specifically Cindy Kershovoff.
It's in the next one.
Then, uh, well, never mind then.
Do you want to bring this up, Council Healy, the Columbus Day Parade?
I, I don't have, I, I was okay with, with, uh, doing this at the last meeting, but Counselor La Petra wanted to bring this to this meeting.
I was going to say some things about it, but now I, I, I just, I'll keep it short and sweet just that, uh, I, I, I'm glad that we still have the Columbus Day Parade. I'm still, I'm, I'm glad it's still named after Christopher Columbus and, uh, hope the whole town comes out on Saturday and we have a good time. Sunday, that's what I meant to say.
Uh, any other comments for nine twenty two? Moving now to ten six.
Mr. President, on that one we received from Renewal by Anderson, can the manager or solicitor or somebody explain that? Renewal by Anderson windows? So I think you gave me something back on it, Bill, regarding, if you want to explain it, but I think they can do it is the bottom line.
Uh, is that in our?
Yes.
It's in the council report.
They wanted to go door to door to.
Yeah, we, how can we, we promote that?
We can't promote it, but they, they, they allowed to do it. They come in to find out they're allowed to do it.
Their business.
And basically in the past, we've always just hope it's utility companies only. So it's, you know, Verizon Electric, those are the only ones that can go door to door. So magazine sales of, if you're selling whatever, you can't do it technically.
Yeah. The council can authorize that?
No, no, this is just making you aware. Because it was a letter that was addressed.
That was a letter that was addressed from Renewal by Anderson to.
That's, that was my understanding. They were asking out for our endorsement, but that would couldn't do that.
No.
Right.
The man.
Can you let Bill?
Bill, do you want to add more to this?
Sure. So the letter wasn't really about endorsing a product. We have apparently, uh, we have a prohibition, um, regarding door to door sales. And, uh, the letter essentially said, you don't have the right to, um, a complete prohibition against door to door sales under the First Amendment of the U S Constitution. And the letter's correct. Uh, there are a series of laws on this while, um, commercial speech is, is protected under the First Amendment. And while we can make, uh, and, uh, many audiences do, uh, place reasonable time, place and manner restrictions on the exercise of that commercial speech. Our ordinance doesn't do that. Our ordinance just says you can't do it. As a consequence, um, after reading it and having a discussion with the town manager, um, essentially advising the town manager, the same thing I'm sharing with you now. Um, I suggested that we could, uh, we could take a look at, um, some model door to door ordinances that meet constitutional standards. It's not unusual. They're everywhere around us. Um, and the council can kind of decide what model it would like to follow. Uh, but bottom line is that an outright prohibition against any door to door sales is not allowed. You have to place reasonable time, place and manner restrictions on the exercise of that commercial speech.
Thank you. Council La Petra?
So what does our ordinance currently say pertaining to door to door? We don't have one?
Yeah, it says you can't do it.
All right. So I, I would be interested in, in doing as much as we can to, to, uh, I, obviously we can't stop door to door sales, but i- is there something that we could put in place to, to make it more inconvenient for door to door salesmen?
Well, we don't, we, we don't want to make the speech, the exercise of the right inconvenient. What we want, what we want to do is place reasonable time, place and manner restrictions on it for the public good, for the public safety. That's how we want to approach it. And there are lots of models, believe me.
That's what I meant to say.
There's lots of models for you to look at. Um, and we can put, we can put some, uh, together for the council to review.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments on this? So this will be a future agenda item.
Good. Appreciate it.
Uh, moving down. We received a letter from the school committee, uh, asking for additional funding. Just want to be clear that this wasn't moved forward until this council votes to move it forward. So that's, that's our rules. So that, that's why it's on this council report. If we want to entertain this. I'm seeing nobody.
No.
All right. I'm going to address this. Uh, Mr. Ayello and I were both on the council when, when this turf field was put in. And, uh, we were the first two people to realize that the quad was a bad idea and we took a vote one night and lost five to two and a year later, the rest of the town agreed with us. But what we did say, and we said this by resolution, but also we have the minutes from, uh, our budget, our budget, uh, adoption, and I'll read it. It was a consensus of the majority of the council to authorize up to five hundred thousand from the current year. Council plus to be used for Wesley Public School Synthetic Turf, capital project at the Wesley High School, uh, Jarry Field contingent on the balance of funding, and this is the important part, contingent on the balance of funding being fully obtained and from sources other than the municipality. And then, and only then will the town funds be released. As, as everybody in town party knows at this point, they didn't even come close. Okay? So we, we by our own rules, by our own resolutions. Well, unfortunately I'm cut off, so I can't finish it. You got it on yours?
I'll, I'll continue where you have it cut off. All right. Uh, contingent on the balance of funding being fully obtained and from sources other than the municipality and the town fund shall not be released for use until the Audrey Field Synthetic Turf Project is approved by the W P S School Committee and is one hundred percent funded. Et cetera. There's more stuff. But that's the most important.
And what that means. Okay. And what that means is we never, we never were obligated or committed to give them one penny. Say by our own rules, by our own resolution, but the, the budget that we adopted, we did not have to give them one cent. But even though we did not owe them one penny for this turf field, in order to, to, what we thought would be fully balancing it at the time, we decided to give them over a hundred, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of the five hundred. And, and that was a purely a gift because we were not obligated to give them one penny, even though Cindy Kershovoff is asking, and it's not Cindy, it's the school committee, asking for our remaining commitment of a hundred and nineteen thousand. We gave them three hundred and eighty one thousand dollars more than we, we were supposed to, more than we had to. Apparently not enough for, for a turf field that the town never voted for. And, uh, this is the part that, that really, that really bothers me. They're coming back to the town for an extra hundred and nineteen thousand dollars after we gave them three hundred and eighty one thousand dollars more than we were supposed to. And while we do this, they're sitting on a fund balance of over eight million dollars. So that's eight million dollars the school committee has. They could take a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars out of that and obviously not miss it for a second. Now, eighty million dollars that's, that's sitting there doing nothing right now. When you look at your tax bill and you see, you see a transportation fee, when you see a hundred dollars maintenance for the water towers, you probably want to have any of this. If we could get some of this money back, I, think of how much lower our taxes should be, but it's sitting in an account over with the school committee with no purpose at all, growing exponentially every day. And, uh, and they still want another hundred and nineteen thousand dollars from, from a resolution that we passed that we, we gave them three hundred and eighty grand more than we should have to begin with. So please, school committee, put this to bed, take the money out of your fund balance and, and don't come to us with this anymore. That's my, my plea to them.
Uh, any other comments on that? Council Van Dover?
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree with, um, Counselor La Petra. I don't know what you're thinking. I mean, you, the school committee was supposed to raise the funds. Instead of going out and marking up the front of our building out here with chalk, um, those school committee members should have been out knocking on doors, trying to get funds for this. And this, the town did not want this. The townsfolk did not want this. The school decided they were going to do it anyway. They should be responsible for the, for the money. And you've got over eight million dollars and you're coming to us for a hundred and nineteen? That's kind of embarrassing. I'm sorry. Um, spend your own money. We just gave you a huge raise in the last budget. Okay? Huge. And use the money on this. And that's all I have to say about that. I'm an absolute no.
Anyone else? Council Nehmeyer?
Yeah, I do want to, uh, dispute the characterization of this. It looks to me like seven point five million, um, as, as sitting there useless. I think we went over this during the budget season. However, I do, um, I do want to, uh, take a look to see if the school committee, if they have a good reason for why it's not coming out of their unrestricted fund. If they could provide that reason to us, um, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to see why they're asking for this instead of going that route.
It's my understanding it's already been paid. It's already been accounted for.
Okay.
It's within their budget. They're, they're looking at the original motion that I was part of when I was on the council to provide up to five hundred thousand dollars. The council, after that, Council Ayello's council voted three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You know, this, this is part of the infrastructure of the town. This is something that is, has great value to the town. Um, not only the school department, but the public as well, um, can utilize this. It's a much expansion of our recreation fields. So to say that it wasn't voted on, it wasn't required, it wasn't requested, um, is kind of misleading the public in, in the, in the fund balance. There are, there are restrictions that are already, uh, defined for the fund balance. And this is something that will get involved very much in the, uh, month of December, when we meet with the school committee in their new budget, um, with the town manager. So they have restrictions on their fund balance and for projects that they've, they provided. You know, we, we have a project, uh, one, one offhand is the, uh, the Bradford Rec, uh, s- center. We have, what, a one and a half million in there? Something of that nature. So that, that's a fund balance, but it's restricted to that use. So it's not, it's available. If we had an emergency, we could, we could, you know, say, we're not going to build this. We're going to use it for something else. But, um, that's, that's what this, this list of fund balance includes. So I.
Got you.
We have to work together with the school.
Thank you, thank you for that elucidation in history, Mr. President. I, I think I got a grip on it now.
Okay.
All right.
Council.
Yeah, just quick. Yeah, it was actually when we did the resolution and the budget in twenty twenty three that was, uh, Ed Marone was still the president at that time.
So you, I didn't, shouldn't give you the credit.
Yeah. Well, I, well, I helped write the stuff, but yeah, he was the, he was the president at the time and, and it was voted by a majority. So, um, that was the thing. And, and here's, here's a few things and, and these are just facts. No emotion involved whatsoever. Uh, the town council approved up to five hundred thousand. Um, and then initially, and then we were determined more during the budget season and we did. And we just read what we determined in the budget season. So, um, the project ended up looking nice on a jury field, beautiful. It gets used. Um, but they jumped the gun a little bit. They, they approved the contract before they had funding, a hundred percent funding. Um, so the town was not obligated to provide anything. But, uh, you know, things were, uh, three hundred and eighty one thousand was paid and the council ended up reaffirming that. Um, keeps the manager out of hot water. And, uh, so yeah, I mean, the, the project's done. It's completed. It's all paid. Seriously, it's, it's, um, I mean, if they're so strapped that they can't find a hundred and nineteen thousand.
They have and they paid it.
So it's, all right, it's all paid. So it, it's, it's a done deal. And, and I, the town did pay three hundred and eighty one thousand and it did not have to. It was not obligated to. But the town did. Um, and that was done when I was the president. So we followed up with that. So we did provide that and, and tried to bring it before us last year too, and, and explained it and thought it was a done deal, over. But now it just keeps, keeps popping up for some reason. Um, but word, word, word was explained to him last, last year. And I thought that was over with until we saw this. Thank you.
Uh, any other? Very good. We'll move on to, uh, uh, town manager reports. Counsel Solicitor, you have a memo to us? I think Council Van Dover asked for this.
Yes. So, uh, there's been a request uh, for the town manager to provide the legal fees for the, all the litigation surrounding the rights of ways. So um, I have, um, put together for the town manager and presenting to you uh, the breakdown on, um, all of the, uh, litigation costs and expenses through the initiation of the litigation through, um, August of twenty twenty five. Now, the litigation actually began, um, in July of twenty twenty three. With the Wicapag Fire District, um, suing, uh, bringing a legal action in Washington County Superior Court pursuant to a motion to adjudge the town in contempt for referring the sand trail, uh, to the C R M C. Uh, the Wicapag Fire District has also brought legal actions against us on the sand trail in Providence County Superior Court and in Washington County Superior Court. The Wicapag Fire District has also brought legal actions against us, um, in the, uh, Washington County Superior, in the Providence County Superior Court and the Washington County Superior Court regarding Spring Avenue. Now, the, uh, litigation surrounding the sand trail are, uh, the, begins with a motion to adjudge the town in contempt for. are, uh, the, begins with a motion to adjudge the town in contempt for referring it. The town, we prevailed. That motion was denied and dismissed by the Washington County Superior Court. It then brought a legal action against us in Providence County regarding the sand trail. We prevailed. We brought a motion to dismiss and the court dismissed it. They then brought a legal action against us in the Washington County Superior Court, which is being presided over because of the travel of all these cases. The presiding justice, and I think it was a good decision, the presiding justice of the Superior Court pursuant to her authority appointed a single judge to handle all these matters. And so it is a Washington County case, but it's being presided over by Judge Rispalo. Um, and as I said, the Providence County case was dismissed and our motions to dismiss the sand trail, uh, legal action in Washington County are pending. All arguments have been heard and we're waiting a decision from the judge. The Weka Park Fire District also sued us regarding Spring Avenue. Weka Park Fire District brought a lawsuit against us in Providence County Superior Court. Um, and we filed a motion to dismiss. We prevailed. That was dismissed. Weka Park Fire District then brought a law, a lawsuit against us in Washington County Superior Court. Once again, we have filed motions to dismiss. All arguments have been heard, um, and we are waiting a decision from Judge Rispalo. Um, also, we, uh, we initiated, um, a request to the Coastal Resources Management Council to designate Spring Avenue as, um, a right of way. Uh, you heard one of the interveners, uh, present, uh, during public comment earlier this evening. Um, and that matter, as you know, began the public, after all of the preliminary administrative processes before the Rights of Way Subcommittee, um, the, uh, public hearing component of that began here in this town council, um, and that will continue, awaiting to get the next date. And, um, the reason for that process is that it's considered, um, a contested process, contested administrative process because the Weka Park Fire District entered into that matter to contest that designation. So, um, there are five, um, uh, legal actions brought against us by the Weka Park Fire District in relation about the sand trail and the, um, Spring Avenue. Two are still surviving, um, in Washington County Superior Court, waiting for decisions on our motions to dismiss. Though, um, Whatshall Fire District and the Whatshall Conservancy have also brought, um, an action against us, um, regarding, uh, Fort Road Napetree Point. You know, we've talked a lot about Napetree Point tonight. Everybody knows what that's about. We recently talked about the status of that case with, um, cross motions for discovery going on, motions for possible summary judgment, series of depositions. Um, so, um, those are essentially all of the litigations that have been going on. The, uh, five Superior Court cases brought against us by the Weka Park Fire District, the challenge in the CRMC by the Weka Park Fire District to the Spring Avenue request for a designation of, of a right of way, and the Whatshall Fire District, Whatshall Conservancy litigation, um, in Superior Court. So, and finally, the, uh, administrative action in front of CRMC. Um, so, um, all the legal fees, as I said, have from Conley Law, from Cameron Middleman, um, the, you know, we were requested, um, and recommended by the town council to bring in, um, some, a partner to assist us in these matters. Um, and Cameron Middleman is that choice. You've all been following that work and you pretty much know about it. In addition to that, I might add, although it's not part of our, uh, fees or expenses, in addition to that, um, we've been, um, um, common interest partners with both the Attorney General's Office and the Spring Avenue and Sand Trail Matters. Um, and, um, with the help of the intervenor, um, in the, uh, Spring Avenue matter. Um, and, uh, so been a lot of litigation. Everybody's suing us. Uh, uh, not everybody, a couple of fire districts, but Weka Park Fire District in particular decided to sue, sue, and sue. Um, now, the, uh, legal expenses, as I said, outlined month by month, um, since the initiation of the lawsuit. In addition to that, there are other, um, expenses. There's related expert expenses. There's related expenses for all the title abstracts that we've done in all these matters. Uh, and, uh, there's been extensive, um, depositions taken, um, particularly in the, uh, CRMC matter. And so the depositions get expensive. The transcripts, you know, you've, you've all, um, had either the, um, the blessing or the misfortune, um, to review your transcript. You've seen the bills for them. They are expensive. So with all of those lawsuits, um, all of the lawyers' fees and expenses, um, total 366,294 dollars and 49 cents over that period of time.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing that.
Yep, welcome. Uh, sort of related to that, if I may, Mr. President. Um, back in, um, October, excuse me, back in, this is October, back in September, a few weeks, uh, about three weeks ago, um, as we, again, a request, uh, initiated by Council Van Dover and the entire council joining in, um, there was a request to address what, what are the town of the city's eminent domain powers and what's the rules around that. And we did provide that memo. And I don't want to go through it again in detail, but as you know, that memo outlined, uh, essentially what eminent domain is and the legal issues surrounding a municipality's exercise of eminent domain powers, and particularly as it focused on, um, rights of, the rights of ways issued and the rights of ways of the fire, of, you know, that we're in litigation with regarding the fire district. And highlighted for you some of the, um, legal issues that are, um, being confronted in Rhode Island right now regarding municipal exercise of eminent domain powers, as well as the unique legal issue, um, for us, um, of, um, if we chose, if we chose to try to exercise eminent domain powers as one public agency over another public agency, a fire district created by statute, which has the status of a, of a quasi-public agency here in the state of Rhode Island. Um, and so while, um, I hope that was helpful, uh, Council of Van Dover asked for a supplemental memo that was more about the process pieces than about the legal issues. I indicated that we'll do that. We had a bit of a conversation about, um, I don't want to say a concern, but how important I think it is that you can't just sort of isolate those process issues. You have to look at what those process issues are in light of the specific, um, legal issues regarding Rhode Island municipal exercise of eminent domain and in particular, eminent domain exercise of, of another public agency. Now, first of all, I want to say that all that litigation that we just talked about, the fire districts are asserting ownership rights in those properties. We are challenging the nature of those ownership rights. We are not agreeing with them. So I don't want anything that I say in this response to the council's request about the exercise of eminent domain, that we are in any way even inferentially conceding that our challenges to the nature of their property rights are kind of being pushed aside. Because we don't want to be in the kind of, you know, the, a position of incongruity where we're saying, oh, we challenged the nature of your ownership rights, but by the way, uh, we're, for eminent domain purposes, we're going to say you own it and we're going to go after it. So I, I, I want to be responsive to the question, but I don't want to in any way concede, um, even by inference, that any of our challenges in that, all that litigation, um, are, are not for real, are not, are not based on good legal arguments and facts. Now, Council of Van Dover recently, um, provided the entire council, I know you all saw it, um, I, I, I'm not sure of the source. I don't know what, uh, that source is, but, um, but I don't disagree with any of it. Perplexity was the name of it. Um, and so, um, and at the, as part of that information that Council of Van Dover shared with you, um, it had a, has a section at the end entitled, um, "How does the town use eminent domain in Rhode Island to secure a public right of way to town land for recreational purposes?" And it has, uh, steps in the eminent domain process and it has that, you know, those procedural components that we've talked about. And it's very generic. And while I don't disagree on a generic basis with each one of those procedural components, I would call your attention to the last comment at the end of those procedural moments entitled "Additional Notes," in which whoever the author of this writes, "The process is subject to constitutional and statutory oversight, and towns are strongly advised to act transparently and enstrict compliance with Rhode Island law to avoid legal challenges or claims of improper taking." And I, I hope that's where you think your solicitor comes in. And to that, to that end, um, having this distributed, having this been distributed this week, um, uh, this weekend, I did want to try to finish up that piece of it. What is, what does our eminent domain process look like for us? And so you have the supplemental memo, uh, tonight. And, and so what I'll, I'll just summarize, I'm not going to read it. I'll just summarize it. But this is the response to the council requesting, you know, the memory and identifying the process for eminent domain. And it's a little bit repetitive because it means that, once again, we want to say that, you know, our charter, um, has the condemnation piece in it. We have by ordinance referencing the rights of ways. So we've got a good start in our organic governing document. Um, but, I have to say that we should look to litigation going on in Rhode Island right now, addressing, even using all of those procedural steps, all of that process that's outlined in that memo and that I outline in this one for you, that there are two cases pending in federal court right now. One in Coventry, challenging Coventry's use of, um, eminent domain with very similar grounding authority in its organic governing document, and the town of Johnston, uh, using, um, its, uh, eminent domain powers, both for public purposes. There's not a dispute that, um, the, um, Coventry, um, uh, essentially taking private property in relation to a body of water that wants to use exercise for recreational purposes. And in Johnston, it's about a municipal campus for the construction of police fire stations and a new town hall, well-accepted public uses. So it's not about that. Um, but it is a challenge to whether or not the municipalities pursuant to Rhode Island law can use those provisions within their charter and within their ordinances in order to exercise eminent domain. Both Coventry and both Johnston followed all the processes that are outlined, um, in the note that Counselor Van Dover, and in the process that we outlined in this memo. The difference is in the memo that I provided you, as to each step, I identify what the particular challenge may be to us, um, in going through that process. And I'm, it's all in there. I'm not going to go through it piece by piece, but I'll describe it this way. Rhode Island general law doesn't have an overriding enabling statute that says, "Hey municipalities, you have eminent domain and this is how you exercise." Instead, it has a series of statutes that enable eminent domain for cities and towns in very specific areas. And so what you're, you're, you're really doing is relying on a more generalized, um, statutory authority and saying that pursuant to that, when a city or town has condemnation authority in its charter, as long as you follow all those due process steps, you're, you're, you're going to satisfy it. What, the question that isn't answered and won't be answered by either one of those cases. So even if I would say to, even if I were to say to you, you know, in probably by winter, early spring of next year, we'll have district court decisions finally on the Coventry case and the Johnston case that will clarify some of that. But it won't, and, you know, how likely is it that whichever side wins or loses will appeal to the First Circuit? About 99.99%. Um, what it won't answer is the issue of what happens when one public entity attempts to exercise eminent domain over another public entity, even when it's for an absolutely legitimate public purpose, authorized by your charter and specifically identified your ordinance, what happens? Because the case law, it's not, it's not common. The case law out there from other jurisdictions gives us some guidance, but it's not authoritative. And there is no decision either in our circuit, the First Circuit Court of Appeals, or in any Rhode Island court. And, you know, as, as we've learned through our examination of the public law process and the creation of these fire districts, they are fairly unique, um, quasi-public creatures. Um, so while I can tell you what those procedural steps are, and I can say to you, um, let's enact an ordinance that captures or do a resolution that captures all those due process steps and do it. What I will tell you is that just like all this other litigation we have, you're going to litigate, you're not going to litigate just, just compensation. You're going to litigate all of those issues. You'll be in federal court along with Coventry and Johnston. And I'm not saying don't do it for that reason. I just want to be honest with you, because the suggestion seems to be that eminent domain is easy. And let's, why, why do all this litigation? Well, eminent domain is not going to end there. Your litigation's not going to be simply about what is just compensation. You're going to litigate every one of these issues. In addition to that, what just compensation means, um, I know there's some suggesting, some suggestion out there, well, you know, let's look at the tax assessors' records and see what that land is assessed at. And, um, there's been some suggestion, um, that, uh, well, you know, when you look at this process, you do, the process does require an appraisal, there's a kind of negotiation. So we'll get closer to it. Here's, here's what's critical when looking at just compensation for the kind of taking that we are looking at. Let's assume it's just the issue about one public entity exercising eminent domain over another public entity goes away. Assume that's not even a discussion. Look at the sand trail, for instance, and Rhode Island general law 2417 describes payment under just compensation as not only like that value for that land, means that the city or town is not required to pay just for the property taken, but also for the loss in value that is the, a pertinent damage to any remainder of the property's value. So it's not just looking at the four corners of that piece of land. If there is an argument, I'm not saying there is, but you know it will be raised, that there is a pertinent damage, meaning that compensation is the loss in value of the remainder of the property. There's what other damage to property value occurs with exercising eminent domain over that specific piece. So it's not quite as facile as it might sound. Um, so my memo asks, asks you to look at that. And again, it's not a, it's not an extensive research on, um, it's not the legal memo on what are the odds on, um, a taking in Rhode Island of one public entity by another, since there are no cases in Rhode Island on it, no cases in the First Circuit on it. And, uh, but I'm really just calling your, to your attention that that is an important issue that other jurisdictions have looked at. And the jury's out on what would happen in Rhode Island. Other, there's not a bright line test by the courts out there as to how you address that issue. Different courts have looked at it differently and applied different standards. So I want to share that.
Thank you, Doug Solicitor Conley, for your review of eminent domain on, on two different memos. on, on two different memos, the September 8th and October 6th memo, and also taking time to look at the, the overview of eminent domain that was provided by Perplexity, I'm not certain of their organization, but.
It's actually a, it's like a, it's just an email platform is what Perplexity is, but the information was provided to me. I'm going to blame John Gagné. He's the one that pointed me in this direction.
And I'm not challenging, I didn't mean to say, I'm not challenging, I'm just saying it is what it is.
Yeah.
And it is, I don't disagree with what it says, it's just that it's meant to be that kind of generic presentation.
Right, exactly.
We have very specific facts, legal issues that we need to address if this council should decide to uphold.
And I, and I understand 100% that it's never cut and dry. I get that. And I, I wanted this presented because I wanted the people to be able to have at least some sort of guideline as to how the process works, right? You also gave us a little bit more, an intricate one with, you know, nailing down Fort Road, et cetera. But this was for the people, so they could actually see. I was requested to ask for this, I asked for it. And, you know, I just, I asked for it on May 5th. So it, it's taken a while to get it, and so I kind of asked, I reached out elsewhere.
It's a good inquiry.
Can I, can I speak to that issue? We heard it from the Harbor Management Commission as well. There's this, there's this timeline of when they ask for something. It takes a lot more research and, and reflection on what the requirements are than just turning it around in a, in a two-week period.
No, I, I completely understand that, Mr. President. I just, it's been five months. So that's all I'm saying. I just wanted to get something out to the people to try to get their questions answered.
Can I also emphasize one other point? You had mentioned it, and I just want to emphasize it, that eminent domain is over a parcel that you don't own.
Right.
And the town is saying emphatically $360,000 worth, and we do own it.
And, and just for the sake of travel, I, I don't want to get into a debate about it, but I, I react, not react, but I follow the direction of the council. So it's when the council acts as a body, respectfully to the Harbor Management Commission, I react, I react to that and follow the directives of the council. The council gives me directions as a body, that's all, that's all.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have anything to do with the harbor management and what they do is, besides going to their meetings. But again, I was asked to ask for this, I did. Thank you very much for covering it, I appreciate it.
Thank you again. Any comments on the solicitor's memo anybody would like to make? Okay. Thank you. We're now at 9E, the town clerk.
I just put at the council seats some information on the Columbus State Parade. And if anybody is participating, it just lets you know that the division and unit that you will be in.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Agenda referrals and backlog agenda. I have two that I wrote down. 250th celebration presentation in the door-to-door ordinance update. Door-to-door ordinance. Are there any others?
I have one. I, I'm not really sure where this is supposed to go, but I'll just throw it out there and if we can find a spot for it. I would like to find out how we can create a liaison type, I'm sorry, an alternate type position in the finance department. I'm not sure if that's a solicitor question.
It's actually on the agenda referral from 98.
Okay. So it's already there? Okay, thank you.
I would like to make an agenda referral that we abolish the finance committee. Abolish the finance committee, I'll make it, put it right next to the, put an extra person on there.
You know it's part of our charter, so it's going to be charter amendment. Seeing no more, we've requested the town manager by town counselors.
Could I just interject something? Council Healy, I think, passed me over to this to remind me of that appointments committee meeting. And, and this kind of goes in line with some of the appointments committee stuff we talked about. And now I remember what this was about, that we're going to request that, this was the three of us on the appointments committee back in 2018. We're going to request that the next meeting, either under appointments for future agenda items, that we have a workshop for board of committee members and others to review ethics and requirements to properly run a board or commission. And that, that was, and we did end up having the state ethics, Rhode Island ethics come down and provide training like they did this time. So we did that. And I think it had been a little while since that had been done. So we did that. And also a clerk sent out the booklet on the boards, committees and commissions on how to function. So that was, we sent out to all the committees and with a letter. I, I don't think we actually had training specifically for them on how to do the meeting, but if they had any questions, they certainly asked the clerk or, or something, and, and we would provide additional training. So that's what that was, that was about, because there was a lot of, there were a lot of new people on different boards and committees, so that's what that was about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any agenda referrals? Seeing none, request of the town manager by town counselors? We call them every day anyway, so.
I did have a quick one. Now, there is a pending flag ordinance potentially coming our way relatively soon. Would it be possible, no rush on this, but to get a list of the flags on town properties, the flagpoles on town properties? Okay, thank you.
I actually just have a question. When will the pickleball courts be taken down and it convert back over to ice skating?
End of November.
End in November. So it's right after Thanksgiving it goes back to ice. So I think it's, I have the dates. Third week in November they come down, the ice rink goes up.
Thank you.
Chris, I, I just wanted, I was, I was unaware that we have a flag ordinance coming. What, did you fill me in on this a little bit?
I wasn't either.
This was a request I made a while back. It was regarding putting up a flag to honor the anniversary of the Battle of Bunker Hill. The veterans' organization took that up. They said they'd prefer we don't do that. And then they offered to start drafting an ordinance regarding flags and their use in town. So they're going to potentially submit that to us at some point?
The veterans' committees do this?
Yeah.
It was, yeah, the town manager had, I believe, talked with the chair of the Rosamana Committee. And I mean, he can, he can always, he addressed the council on this before. And they're working on the ordinance. They normally meet quarterly, but they did schedule a special meeting during the summer to kick this off, and they're working on that. They have a draft. I'll have to find out when the next meeting is, I think it's coming up in November.
And this contains just the town land, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, the only thing we can do is, is address town, town property. Can't address private property. So that, that'll be coming back to the, to the manager in the next couple of months. I don't want to say a specific date, because off the top of my head, I don't have the date. But the anticipated date was fall, winter to get it to the manager. It's not something you want to develop in 20 seconds and, and write it. It's a town ordinance that's being proposed, so. And there's some good people on there doing that, so. Manageable.
Yeah, so it's basically when these specialty flags come up to hang, whatever, whatever, Bunker Hill you mentioned, and there's others we get requests for all the time, there's no procedure as to where they can, we just tell everybody, no, right? I mean, that's usually what we do, because all the flagpoles are spoken for in town. You know, every building has a state and town and, and, you know, the American flag and all the war memorials and monuments and so.
And this would help determine where they go, how long they, how long they go up?
Yeah, you can maybe come up with one area, you can put the different flags. If there's a request that goes to the committee, the committee will decide how long it can be hung and where it goes and so forth.
Well, then in that case, I, I kind of want to piggyback on this ordinance. I like the idea of trying to figure out what we put on our town land. So why don't we also discuss an ordinance for holiday decorations in town land and how long they should remain and stay up? So throw that on the.
You already mentioned this, didn't you?
Well, let's, let's make an ordinance.
In Bahumbug Land or?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm all for Christmas. I'd just like to see Christmas end sometime, that's all.
Okay. Council Healy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a request. I don't know if I'm going to need to do this on a, I don't know, personal or whatnot, but I had already asked for it, so to bring it public. There was a matter that moved from social media into the chamber. Social media I don't care about, but when it gets brought here, it's a little bit different. So the claim, it's a claim that says that I am anti-business, apparently, because of a split second like on a post that was removed in haste. It's frustrating because something that is this trivial is being used to be twisted into some sort of talking point to question my integrity, honestly, or my commitment to you guys. So since the accusation was circulated publicly, but more importantly was brought into, to the full council staff, it deserves some public clarification. So out of fairness for any of this, I reached out to confirm the facts before speaking. What it was confirmed is that Seafood Haven at 300 Atlantic Ave does not hold an outdoor entertainment license. The licensing board minutes show that this was specifically discussed, and the owner clearly stated that there would be no outdoor entertainment. Despite that, dozens of outdoor events were held and heavily advertised all over the place. Those are clear violations, they're unfair, and they're unfair to every other local business owner that follows the rules, pays the fees and operates in good faith. What makes this especially disappointing to me is that the individual, the individual involved is also the executive director of the Miss Squamikit Business Association, the very organization meant to represent and support those same small businesses that I apparently hate. The MBA members, they pay their dues, they expect their fairness, not favoritism. So when the person leading the organization disregards town regulations and doesn't just hurt the town, it undermines the very businesses he is supposed to advocate for along with our licensing board. And yet, while all of this is happening, I'm accused of being anti-business, not for any actions that I took, but because of a social media like. It's being twisted into something that it's not. And it's ironic, really, that the same people who ignored these town rules and profited from them are trying to paint me as the problem. So to be clear, very clear, I support Westerly Business Community, especially the small, family-owned businesses that play by the rules and make this town exactly what it is. But supporting businesses does not mean that we turn a blind eye when somebody or people with influence decides the rules do not apply to them. To accuse me of being anti-business while violating those same standards, it's not just hypocritical, it's manipulative and it's wrong. And I truly believe that this is why the businesses that brought this to my attention months ago have valid concerns when they said that they had fear of retaliation and extended that caution to myself. I didn't raise this to cause conflict. I raised it because the facts matter, accountability matters and fairness matters. That's how we protect the integrity of this town, the businesses that make it thrive. So I am requesting that the town manager review the licensing enforcement for the record and, for this establishment, and report back to us on any violations or applicable fees. It's not just about anything else besides trust. The public's trust that our government, their government, is going to hold everybody to the same standard regardless of their position, their connections or what's in their bank account. Thank you.
I'll leave it up to the manager to just, to decide the validity of these charges and the potential of remediation of these charges. I don't know that it's a town council, rises to a town council action at this point.
Can you respond? An inquiry did come in from Council Healy, and I did look into the licensing, as was mentioned. And I, and Mary's going to have to bail me out over here, but they have a particular type of liquor license now, but they plan to apply for the, whatever the next liquor license is, and then inside or outside entertainment?
Yes, they currently have a Class B limited, which is beer and wine, but they want to expand that to a Class B big chiller, which is full liquor, and they want to apply for indoor/outdoor entertainment. And in order to have outdoor entertainment, they have to have indoor entertainment license.
Yeah, they have to have indoor to be able to get outdoor. But currently, the only status now, they have the license that you mentioned, beer and wine, license only. And again, as I explained, at the time, if there is a violation of, you know, entertainment or outside-inside, whatever it is, entertainment, at the time the violation is happening, that's what we have to be made aware of. And then we will take action against a particular business. So there's no act, we can't go back after the fact, I guess it, but if it's happening, then we have to know when it's happening, we will take action.
Even with all of the documentation?
Like you send me a picture of somebody speeding, I'm not going to give you a ticket after the fact.
Hey, I get, I get them in the mail, they take pictures of me speeding and I still get a ticket.
No, you don't get a ticket from us in the mail.
Not, well, you know what I'm talking about.
The, the difference, if there's areas with speed cameras, yes, you get a ticket a week later because it went through a speed camera. But it doesn't, we're not going to bring up, while someone has a picture of this playing on this particular date, we've just never done that. I mean, it's, it's not something we do. During a violation time, then we would summon somebody into municipal court for violation of a license.
Wouldn't this be best in front of the licensing board?
I think the issues, if there's issues with the licensing, when the application for the license comes before the licensing board, they take into consideration as to all the.
I agree, it's just that the, this was in front of the licensing board, and there was a very clear conversation that there was going to be no outdoor entertainment. And then a month later, there was outdoor entertainment. So this, this has happened, and now it's being escalated. Should I have mentioned it earlier? Sure, but I'm not, that's, that's not the game that I play. If they're, they're doing things, they're not hurting anybody. Thank you for the businesses for trusting me to come forward about it to me, and I appreciate that. But that's why I didn't bring it forward, because it's not hurting anybody.
Oh yeah, I understand.
And then things just continue to progress. So if that's the decision of the manager that we don't go backwards on anything, I just wonder how that precedent is going to be.
I want to say it's the decision of the manager, I'm just telling you. The, the, the police department side is the one that issues summonses for the violation of entertainment, because they're the ones that would go monitor and say, okay, there's entertainment playing. If we have noise ordinance issues or ban playing too loud. I mean, I will review it with the solicitor and get his thoughts. Certainly, I don't want to make it look like I'm not taking or I'm, I'm just saying we haven't. Summer is over, we're into October, I don't even know if the business is still open, but I don't even know if the entertainment's still happening. But it's not like we're going to go back in on July 12th, you had a, whatever type of entertainment.
Okay.
Is you, that's not usually what, but I will try to go through those with the solicitor and see if it's any worthiness. But again, all that can be brought up at the time that the licenses applied for, you know. They have to apply for a renewal of a license, that they apply for a different type of liquor license, they apply for an indoor/out, they have to have an indoor to get an outdoor entertainment license. Do they have an indoor entertainment license, Mary, or no?
No, not currently.
Licenses, yeah, are they public hearings, Mary?
Say that again, I'm sorry. Say that again, I'm sorry.
Are they public hearings when it goes before the license?
Just an outdoor, not inside, does not require a public hearing, just outdoor entertainment.
The licensing board isn't public?
No, no, he asked if there was a public hearing required for an indoor/outdoor. Only an outdoor entertainment license requires a public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you. Request of the town solicitor by counselors? Yes, Council Nymar?
Yes, so a little while back, we had talked about potentially getting together a list of best practices for interviews for town committees. Now that the committee is going to exist, I, I think we could probably use it. And then a second one is, it sounds like we're going to have a question come before the council on whether or not we can add an auxiliary member to the finance board. Given that that is, is created in our charter, I think there may also be state legislation around it. Just let us know if there's any, like, patently, you know. you know, legal issues with it that we shouldn't even consider it. Yeah, gotcha.
Thank you. Any other requests? Seeing none, hearing none. Moving on to citizens' comments. This section of citizens' comments is for issues that would affect the matters that could be affected town council, actions made by town government, where town council has, where town council has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power, it's not, it's not held to an agenda item. Citizens have five minutes to speak if they can come up and state their name and address. First is Maurice Devine.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maurice Devine. You'll get there. Just a few things. One, originally I put it down as charity, but it's more, more praise, and therefore, I guess, probably charity towards the members of the town that help us when we're planning events, and also the police department. I've had occasion in the past several weeks to be in two events that were out in the public, and I will note that the police department's support of them has been absolutely fantastic. There was a memorial vigil on the, on the post office steps, and there was also a charity ride that came through town just about a couple of weekends ago. And after months of planning, I will say that town manager, Chief Gingerella, Captain Medina, Lieutenant Rothkeber, Bedunes Corners, and Watch Hill and Westerly Fire Departments, their support was absolutely incredible, exceeded any kind of expectations that we could have possibly had. And I just, that event will actually send something to the town and also send something to the police department and the fire departments, thanking them for their turnout and support. Everybody that participated in that is still talking about it, looking forward to the next opportunity to do something like that, perhaps next year. Second one, the transfer station by water. That is an extremely reasonable and prudent move, understanding project planning on the capital end of things, the cost of materials at the time, and then also, too, not insignificant, the NFPA, every three years reissues all their standards, and there's no checks and balances for that. They put it out, that's it. Doesn't matter if you're a private industry or a public entity, you need to comply. So I think making sure that we have the extra capacity and being able to look at the flexibility with the ability to possibly expand or otherwise be able to absorb, no pun intended with water, any further issues may in fact actually put us ahead of the curve for the next three to six years. So I think that was great. Now on the other side of the balance. Procedurally, this evening, there's a lot of things that went on, well-intended, but I believe a small tragedy has occurred with regards to item In this related public hearing, this is not just what one person wants, or another person wants, it's about the process and the opportunity of the people to be heard. Public comments in the relevant section of the meeting are exclusive of any public participation in a public hearing. This particular public hearing was continued from honor about the 8th of September last. Conducted, we opened, conducted a public hearing, made some actions, revised a proposed ordinance, and closed a public hearing without any input from the public. There were clearly people here waiting to be able to speak. To come forward after it was closed with a point of order from the public would be out of order in the meeting because you can only really do that while it's going on. So I think what we probably need to do to be able to take care of this appropriately is, in keeping with the revisions that were made, re-advertise this, put it back out there, and open it, conduct it, include public comment, and close it at the next meeting. I think that that would be reasonable, prudent, and be inclusive to the greater community of our citizens that you all represent, and I'm trying to speak for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I did not open the public, or go to the public. I did hear from the public and took notes on that, but that was, that was definitely on me. Ben Weber?
Ben Weber, I think Maurice Devine already took care of the procedural issue that I was going to bring up. So I'm gonna say why that's important. What did you guys vote on, is the real question? I specifically, just before that, mentioned a few things that seemed totally ignored. And I don't want to say it was done on purpose, but I was going by what was provided with the ordinance amendments on the agenda, which is this picture that I gave to you. And I even drew the red line as to what I was talking about, but you all just made a law excluding these three Platts. Two of them have nothing to do with Fort Road at all. And you would have known that if you looked at the GIS map of the real Platts, or you actually had an official Platt map in front of you while making this decision. Furthermore, your town solicitor just told you again, he does nothing that you all don't tell him to do. That was surely evident when he didn't speak up and say, when questioned, these Platts don't have anything to do with it. Number two, and number one dash two dash one, actually, no, sorry, two dash three, dash three and dash two, I believe, those Platts. One is the Miss Squamikit Club, one is the Cabanas. If you look at the actual Platt map, the big one on the top is the one that comes down. That's where the right-of-way is, in its current position. And it also doesn't include, or exclude, in this case, the parking lot, the two Platts here. These two mean nothing. The only one that means anything is one dash one, which is in front of the seawall. He also didn't mention, you guys opened up a public hearing, didn't have public comment. And even though I'm here speaking on my own behalf, I must say, I also resent the implication that the Harbor Management Commission expects things done immediately. That's kind of funny, because we've been sitting here for months making proposals and doing this hard work to give you guys facts so you guys can make well-informed decisions and instruct your solicitor to do what he needs to do on behalf of the public as a whole. So the stuff that we requested, none of it was given in a timely manner. We haven't even received some of the stuff that we've requested, which is holding up our job that you all appointed us to do for you. And Mr. Duhamel, with all due respect, you're our liaison. You should be able to get that on an agenda pretty darn quickly and in a timely And what I'm pointing out now is you all need to do your homework really well and look at the stuff that's provided to you. We don't do this for our health. We do it for your information so that you guys know how to direct your solicitor. If he loses, he doesn't care. He gets paid regardless. He doesn't care if this takes 10 years and he loses. He still gets paid. It's your job as the council to sit there and tell him what direction you want him to do. And if the facts prove that he's not going in the right direction, then you certainly should amend that.
Thank you.
Ben, come over here real quick. I want to give you this too.
Yeah, we're not in discussion yet, but we took out those Platts so that the ordinance wouldn't affect it. So, but they're not, Fort Road isn't part of that. Ben, Fort, Ben, Fort Road isn't on those Platts. So they were in the ordinance, whoever wrote the ordinance, we took them out.
No, you didn't.
We did. We took out 31-1, 31-2.
You only took out one. One dash one is the only one that's relevant. The other Platts right there, read them off, Dylan.
We took out, we took them out.
We took them out.
031 dash 2 and 031 dash 3, we took all three out.
They were listed on the, on the ordinance, we took them out.
Look in the square, and please tell your solicitor those Platts, and ask me if those Platts numbers that I put in that square are excluded from that ordinance. If they're not...
It's, it's, it's the ordinance that we took them out from, not the Platt map.
Not all of these.
Just, just to correct what you said. We can go on to other comments.
Mr. President, just to clarify, 185, Platte 185, lot number 031 dash 1 is the only one that's relevant that you took out tonight, excluded. The other ones that I wrote down are the other, the other Platts.
The other two lots, the other two lots were referenced in that, in that ordinance.
You're not listening.
We took them out.
You're not listening to me.
We took them out.
This is what I'm telling you. You're not listening.
Not applicable.
Please take a look at those Platt numbers I wrote down on there.
I'm sorry I broke, broke tradition here. The next person on the agenda is Joy Cordio.
Good evening, Joy Cordio, Westerly, Rhode Island. I have a few things that I want to touch on that have been on the agenda and that I've heard this evening, but I first want to address President Duhamel. While Ben was speaking and stating that win or lose, the solicitor gets paid, what the public doesn't see is you shaking your head, like, no, that's ridiculous.
I did that.
You did do that.
Yes.
And, yes, that's not my point. My point is, and, and the feeling that there is no care, when the public knows that just four, five short years ago, the same solicitor wrote an opinion saying that there is no evidence, our office has concluded. All this research that was paid for in 2019, 2020, 2021, when you in fact were on the council, causes doubts, just saying. Executive session minutes. President, former president, council president Aiello, speaking tonight as Councilor Aiello, was spot on. The fact that you all don't trust each other enough with executive session minutes tells the whole damn town that we shouldn't trust you. And that came about from the last council, a little conspiracy theory between, unfortunately, I believe, Councilor Shalaba bought into it, but Joy Cordio was leaking minutes. We know what the last council looked like. We know how I was attacked. I don't care about me. You all deserve executive session minutes if you want them. You should not be looking at each other with distrust. You should be letting the townspeople know that you are trustworthy individuals and can be trusted with the town's information. Want to talk about a bad look in each one of you that is within the seven of you. You all decided that you couldn't trust each other, and so, you know, why would the public trust you? Moving on, eminent domain. I still would suggest that you know all options, period. Carry on. Get appraisals. You're hearing that, you're hearing how hard it may be. Find an expert in land use matters. Know, be prepared, and it may not be your council. It could be two councils from now before all this litigation ends, but get the public set up for a win, however it may be. You're not hurting anything by investigating and by researching. As a matter of fact, you'll gain public trust by showing that you want to explore every possibility. I think Councilor Bandover for doing that, for requesting the information that has been provided so far, that came from her wanting to know. I know, I'm so lonely. Your rules. Just a suggestion, maybe it would be better to put each rule on the agenda individually because you're having a difficult time voting on them collectively. Just a suggestion for your next agenda-setting meeting. I have called for, previously in the past, your agenda referral list to be uploaded to Clerk Base so that the people who elected you know what's coming for the town, what future town business looks like. Grants, town manager referenced two grants in regard to the seawall and Watch Hill. Follow up on those if you would, Councilor Niemeyer. They present fabulous opportunities for rights of way in perpetuity. That's it.
Thank you. That concludes the sign-up sheet. Is there someone in the audience that would like to speak? Please come forward with your name and address.
Chris Gatter, 9 Ivanhoe Drive, Westerly, Rhode Island. I just have a sugge, Chris Gatter, 9 Ivanhoe Drive, Westerly, Rhode Island. I have a suggestion that would help everybody at home, help the people in the audience, and it would help your discussions with each other. When you're having the ordinance and a Platt map, display it on the screen instead of a wide shot of the council members. If the Platt map was up, everyone could see it and know what you were referring to. For the text on the ordinance, the red line, if it was on the screen, everyone know, would know what you were referencing. We don't have access to all of these materials, and we would appreciate being, you know, kept in the loop so we know what the discussion is about, what you're voting on, and what we can expect in the future. Okay?
Very good. Anyone else like to speak to the council at this time?
Hi, my name is Ellen Kane, 76 Winter Park Road. I'd like to, I am a member of the Harbor Management Commission. I'm not speaking for the Harbor Management Commission, but I do feel it was a mischaracterization of the Harbor Management Commission to add that somehow you think that we expect things within a couple of weeks. We are quite aware that a great deal of work goes into everything, that you do, everything that Solicitor Conley does. I cannot think of anything... I cannot think of anything that we've requested at all, expecting something within two weeks. And time is hard to keep track of. Sometimes, Mr. Duhamel, you thought that the request had been in September and councillor Vandover pointed out that her request was May. Harbor Management Commission has put in requests to try to educate the public about this, how to participate appropriately in the CRMC hearings about Spring Ave. We've been asking that, actually, you know, a member of the public asked that in April, and we still don't have particularly satisfactory direction for the members of the public from, I mean, they're a solicitor, but also primarily from the CRMC. So I just wanted, I didn't want that mischaracterization to stand. Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me speak.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Joseph Gilford, 38 Seaberry Drive. So if I knew I was going to speak, I would address better. I just want to say that I got interviewed by Mr. Neumeyer and Ms. Healy and Ms. Vandover for the appointments committee, and they seemed very informative and very interested in me, and I just want to say I'm glad that they're still doing the good work that they're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's very nice. Any other people in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none. Counselor's response, five minutes. Anybody like to respond? Counselor Healy?
Just real quick, thank you all for coming and staying. I didn't know we hit nine o'clock, but we're doing all right. Mr. Gilford, I, I appreciate your kind words. For everybody listening, he did a fantastic interview. We will be lucky to have him join us if he does. And then I appreciate, Mr. Divine, when you brought the public input to my attention. I appreciate it and I, I'm glad that everybody else touched on it as well because I did not catch it. It didn't even cross my mind, so I appreciate you bringing it up. I also agree that the transfer station resolution is, is important for the safety, fire safety. And Mr. Weber, I want to look into it. I think, I want, we're going to look into it. I, I hear the, the things behind here. We're going to look into it, but like a yes or a no, if that would be okay? 185-33 is I think what you are mentioning. Maybe, okay. All right. But yeah, thank you, everybody. I totally agree. Also, Chris, get, get stuff up on the screens. We will, I think that's a fair discussion to have and get that going. Thank you.
Counselor Neumeyer?
Morris Divine, thank you so much for bringing up 6A as well as everyone else who did, and the lack of public input. All seven of us missed that, I think, and that is embarrassing. We are going to have to correct that. Joy, thank you for bringing those grants to my attention. I'm going to look at those post haste. Let's see, we should put those plat maps up. I agree with that. That'd be much more helpful for the audience. Let's see here. And Joseph Gilford, thank you for coming and for your kind words. I hope we get to talk again soon. In fact, if you'd stay after, I would like to talk to you real quick. Thank you all for coming.
Any, any other comments?
I just want to thank you all for coming out. Joy, I agree with you. We, we really should put our ducks in a row and investigate and research so when the time comes, if it comes, that we're ready to, to make a move. I totally agree with that. As far as distrust, it's an unfortunate thing that we don't trust each other, but I think we, we are going to work on that. So it, it is not a pretty, pretty sight. So anyway, and Chris, that's a great idea about displaying the maps on the screen. I totally agree because half the time I look up there myself because I want to see them, but they're not there and I have them in front of me. But it's, you know, habit to, to want to look up the screen. I think that is something we need to look into. Mr. Divine, thank you for pointing out our, our, our snafu, if I may. And Ms. Kane, um, yeah, I, I, it's unfortunate that some things get said periodically. I don't think it was necessarily meant to insult anyone. However, we do have to be careful about what we say sometimes, but thank you all again for coming out.
Next. Go ahead, Dylan.
I'm going to, what's that? Okay. I'm going to just, hold on a second.
Okay. Counselor Aiello?
Thank you. Yeah, so I'll have a question for the solicitor through the president, whether or not we can reopen a public hearing tonight or if we should re-advertise. And Ben Weber on the questions? Yeah, three lots we took out, and, and we did take them out, and it wasn't that it wasn't, they weren't meaningless, it was just that they weren't pertinent because the only thing this ordinance tonight was talking about was really the sandy conservation area, the conservation easement, the sandy area. Just telling everybody, it has no intention of building a road out there essentially. And the other crosshatches you have are outside that area, just like those other two lots we took out in the Missaukamieke Club. The parking area between Bay Street and going down towards the Missaukamieke Club, those weren't applicable. They weren't even included in the ordinance. That's outside of the sandy conservation area. That was the only thing this ordinance was addressing was the sandy conservation area. No paved areas essentially. So, I mean, if you can point out something different, then, then please, and then we'll look at it. And Solicitor's going to double check the lots and make sure everything's good. And Joy, thank you for your words, and you speak the truth. And that's about all I can say right now. So thanks for coming and staying involved. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm just going to repeat the, the motion. I made the motion, Ben, so I'm going to repeat what I said. We took out plat 185 lot 031-1. Also, also now, plat 185 lot 031-2, plat 185 lot 031-3. Okay, those, all three were taken out. This map looks okay to me. Now you remember, we're making, this, this ordinance was, as Mr. Aiello said, it was just, it originated as just a way to show that we want, we didn't want to build a road on the conservation land, okay? So let's, let's not get, let's not get crazy in this. We, it looks like to me, the map I'm looking at, it looks like we covered what we needed to cover now. If we're wrong, we'll double check that. And I'm just going to, I figured it was Chris. I remember looking at how many wears were in the, the river when we were talking about Potter Hill Dam. We seem to have to see those up on the screen, but it probably would have been a good idea to put this up on the screen, but I just don't think that we were that. We thought it would be an easier ordinance than it was, and we did miss the public comment of, of the public, uh, public hearing, and that's a mistake. But I still think we got it right. I'm just going to understand by what we did. I still think we got it right. And last note, Joe, it's nice to get a, a nice comment every once in a while. Thank you for that. Even though I'm not part of the committee, it's so rare that it was, it was nice to hear.
Thank you. Counselor Shalaba?
I just want to thank everybody for coming up and speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll respond and, and agree with Counselor LaPietra that the ordinance had been written with three lots that just didn't belong in there. These were paved lots. The Missaukamieke Club lot, you know, Fort Road isn't even on it. So why would that be in the ordinance? We took it out. So it's correct, the action that, the motion that Counselor LaPietra made is accurate to take the lots that are not subject to this prohibition. As, as far as opening up the public hearing again, it's a great idea, Counselor Aiello. I don't know if, if you can get your buddy to your right there to say yes.
We, we can look at the travel of the motion. Here's, as a listener discussion, here's how I thought it traveled. We had our public hearing. That public hearing was closed. The last meeting, yes, this is the second time this has been on. It was continued. We had a public hearing. And at the last meeting, the public hearing was closed and council went into discussion. We continued the matter. This is, and we can, if, if I'm mistaken on the travels, I'm talking to the top of my head, I'll stand corrected. We continued the matter because when we got the council discussion, it was pointed out that we wanted, we wanted to identify some lots designated and which lots do we take out? My memory for what it's worth is that we were probably pretty sure on them, but I'm the one that said, let's just take a week and let me double check and follow up with Counselor Aiello.
That is correct. I'm looking at the minutes and we did close the public hearing.
Yeah, so it was closed. So this was, tonight was under public discussion. I don't know if there was ever even a motion to reopen public hearing tonight. I'm not sure there was.
We were told that it was, it was already open.
Yeah.
We didn't make a motion to reopen.
To reopen, so the public hearing was held. It wasn't reopened for further public hearing tonight.
Yeah, the, I'm, Counselor Healy was probably correct. I apologize for that. I'm going back to the minutes and the public hearing was closed. I apologize, it had said continued public hearing, so I just assumed it was still open.
Well, it was the discussion portion of it.
So, so we did hear from the two, two citizens that had come.
If the council wishes to reopen the public hearing, I mean, you've already voted on the ordinance, you'd have to, if, if as a result of reopening and you heard something you wanted to change, you could move tonight to, you know, re, to reconsider that prior motion. You could do that this evening, but that's how you'd have to do it. You would, if you decided to reopen the public hearing, you do a motion to reopen, listen to further public comment, close it, and if as a consequence of that, because you're still at the same meeting, you could reconsider the vote that you took earlier because you're at the same meeting.
We could reconsider tonight?
You'd, you'd have to reconsider that. You would lose the opportunity to reconsider if you didn't do it at the same meeting.
Let's do it.
Okay. Make a motion to reopen a public hearing?
Most to reconsider, item 6A. I know, he'll get to speak at this meeting. We need a motion to reconsider item 6A.
I, I made a motion to reopen the public hearing. Reopen the public hearing. No, we may never reconsider. We'll just reopen the public hearing and see if we, we don't have to reconsider the vote. We just at least got to give the people a chance to speak.
Reopening.
All right.
All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Counselor Aiello, you made a motion to open the public hearing.
I seconded it.
Seconded by Counselor LaPietra. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now having a public hearing on item 6A. An ordinance in amendment of chapter 21 of the Wesley Court of Ordinance prohibiting roadway sidewalks and infrastructure in Nappetree Point, discussion and possible action. The public hearing, there's no sign up sheet. Please come forward if you would like to speak.
I'm Morris Divine, I live here in Westerly. I will leave some of the finer and more technical points to people that are a little bit more educated on the history of this issue beyond myself. However, I hear repeatedly what's on the agenda. That's what we're talking about. That's what we're discussing. Item 6A, in your published agenda, it says, "Public hearing continued from 8 September, 2025." So it's published, so that's what it was going on. So thank you for your reconsideration.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Mr. Weber?
Ben Weber, I'm going to try to make this very clear for you. You guys are making a law, right? An ordinance, town ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance you stated is to protect pedestrian traffic in perpetuity is what the purpose of this was for, correct?
No, not correct. The purpose of it was to say we would never build a road in a conservation area. That's a purpose of the ordinance, but go on.
True, but in that it was brought to your attention. At the same time, you have to conserve pedestrian access because you actually brought it to my attention, just speaking in a meeting, that, you know, 10 years down the line, the water is going to be at the gate and we're going to have to deal with that. And I said, "Well, Dylan, it's already at the gate." I provided you pictures to prove that, correct? So with that being said, what I said in my note is you have to exclude the prohibition of doing any maintenance and repairs from Bay Street past the fence. Are we clear on this? Everybody in agreement? To do that, you have to exclude from your ordinance, plats, according to the GIS, your own town GIS. I think I see a couple of you are actually on it. If not, you cannot get from Bay Street to pass the fence if it's blocked off. 185-31-1-2 and -3, whatever those other two plats are, they're not even on Fort Road. They don't matter. One is the Cabanas, one is the Missaukamieke Club. Fort Road, if you look at the actual GIS map or an official plat map, not this drawing, which is not official, will show you that this plat right here comes down outside the fence. That right there at the gate, where you go around it, is 185-31-3. The one right here where it says Fort Road is the one that, I agree, is the only one that you guys excluded, which is 31031-TAC1. Which 31-TAC1 extends all the way down to run into 185-TAC33, which is in the parking lot, and then 185-34, which is the entrance. So again, if you're looking at official maps, those all need to be excluded from prohibition to make repairs and maintenance if it gets blocked off. Now do we all agree?
If I may?
Sure.
I think the two that we don't have are the 185-33 and 185-34. If you're pulling in from Bay Street, that would be the paved area to get behind.
Yep, and you're missing one more, the big one.
You took that one out.
185-31-1.
Correct.
We got that one.
You took that one out.
You did?
Yeah, 1-1-2-3 we got rid of. So I think the others that are, are just 33.
Well, according to this plat map, 31-31 is pointed down here.
Yeah, it's a weird lot.
It's a, it's quite an expansive lot.
Yeah.
Right, but look at the GIS again. They're different. Sorry to be particular, but facts are facts.
This is what, this is how we do this as a.
Fort Road, all over it.
Right.
Yep.
185-31-1 goes there.
We took that one out and 181-2 didn't matter.
185-31.
-31.
Not -31-1, 31.
That's not on our map. That's not on this map. This map. It's not here.
Well, it is. It's just not marked.
Okay, so I guess that's why we might have missed it.
And that's, 185-31 by itself is the one that actually gets you around the fence. If you look at it.
Right. That's great. So Ben.
You have to look at a GIS. You have to look at an actual plat map.
I got you.
My point is, this is inaccurate. It's bogus. And you guys just did an ordinance and voted on it according to this map, which is not even official.
So, and I'm going on GIS, which isn't, you know, official either. But that 31 that you're referencing.
Uh huh.
I'm so sorry. This GIS is absolutely terrible. But the 31 that you're referencing is the main area that goes all the way to the tip? Oh, this little, this little sliver. I see exactly what you mean. This one.
Ask him about this. Where are they?
Well, it was listed. That's why we took it out.
We kind of know what we're talking about sometimes. And, you know, I'm not trying to gloat, but we're here for you.
You are.
You know, you guys just made an ordinance, and it's an honest mistake, I would say. But if you had actual plat maps and you, or even your GIS, it clearly shows the boundary lines.
Before you walk away, you have written down here 185-34-21, and then 185-33-89 through 93. This is your notes.
Yeah.
Do we need to look at that as well?
I was going by the GIS, just because that's all I could pull up right now. So 185-34, 185-33, 185-31-1, and 185-31 is what need to be excluded for maintenance and repairs to get from Bay Street to pass the fence.
Ben?
What I'm.
Would lot 031-3 include some of those? Because that looks like that's kind of where the fence is. It's, I got to listen to my map as lot 031-3.
You need to look at the official maps and the GIS. They will show you the boundary lines. 131-, what did you say? 31-3?
-3, yeah.
Has nothing to do with it.
Okay.
Yeah, we took that out.
We did. We did take that out.
We took that out.
I know you took it out, but it has nothing to do with it.
That's the point.
Right, that's why we took it.
You're prohibiting, according to your ordinance, maintenance and infrastructure of any kind, right? But you're also by charter, can't give up any interest in rights of ways. So with that being said, you have to protect from Bay Street to pass the fence. That is the right of way. So, maintenance and repairs on the seawall does.
So, Ben, if I may, just clarify, as far as you're concerned, we should exclude 185-34, 185-33, 185-31-1, and 185-31. As far as plaits, 185-31-2 and 185-31-3, those two are irrelevant. We shouldn't even have those listed. We should only have the four that we just talked about.
That would be my opinion. That would certainly be a question for the solicitor to answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if we include 185 lot 31, you think we should, could say to the fence? Otherwise, we'd be possibly going another 100 yards into the sand dune with a boat.
I didn't make the plotted lines.
It's a sliver of land that butts the parking lot.
Fences could be, Mr. President. I wouldn't put a fence.
Okay.
But, you know.
Only use the whole lot.
Again, we're not building any roads, so what would it matter? It's just maintenance and repairs.
No, I understand. But we want to make it clear that we don't want to build a road on the area beach.
Suggestion, just to keep everybody satisfied and make sure we get this right. Take all this information. The solicitor's been taking notes too, and I know the councils have too. Continue it to the next meeting. Have it verified. Double check the other maps. And if there's corrections we need to make, we can make them at the next meeting. And we'll actually continue the public.
Actually, can we extend the meeting, please? We're past 9:30.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded all in favor.
Aye. Well, I'm all done if there's no more questions. But I would reiterate, having it on the, you know, overhead, if it was an official map, we could have pointed this out ahead of time before you all voted on it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Thank you very much.
We can always include.
Thank you, Ben.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on item 6A? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Well, I, I mean, go ahead with your motion.
I'm going to make a motion to continue the public hearing to the next meeting and to verify all the information and go from there.
May I suggest, I'm sorry, may I suggest for the record, since we did, we did have a motion in a second, and if you're going to reopen public hearing and revisit it, let's, perhaps we can withdraw that now and, you know, do your revote at the conclusion of your public hearing, you know.
You want to rescind the vote? Is that what you're saying?
It's easy to do it at the same meeting than it is a later meeting and just make a clean motion. That's my suggestion, but that's.
So what motion are you suggesting tonight?
Yeah, that we, that the maker of the motion in a second withdraw. No, we already, we voted completely on it. So it would be a motion to reconsider at the continued public hearing. Just a motion to reconsider, that's all. I'm sorry. It would be, it would be a motion to reconsider. We don't need a vote on, but it's simply a motion to reconsider because that's what you're doing at your next public hearing. At your continued public hearing is you are reconsidering it. So it'd be a motion to continue the public hearing as a separate one motion and a second motion to reconsider the vote that was taken earlier tonight.
May I make one point here? We did put back in the red line part on Part B. That would kind of be a catch-all, you know, that we could, we could do something in the event a sea level rise. Am I wrong?
Yes, we did put that back in.
Well.
We don't need to re-advertise.
No. But if we put something on the agenda, then it needs to be what we already adopted tonight?
No, I'm just saying if we're going to take all these extra plaits out of, we've already got a catch-all in there. But I don't know.
And just do whatever you want.
Yeah.
Make a motion to continue.
End the motion. This needs a second.
I'll second.
End the motion to, I had a motion to reconsider, I mean, to continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
To do two different things, so says our solicitor.
First one's to.
Yes.
Yeah. I made it, and I think either Alex or Rose seconded it. And then, so we have to vote, have to vote on the continuing of public hearing, and then we'll take another motion on reconsidering. So, Mr. President, we need to take a vote on the motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion made by Counselor Yello, seconded by Counselor Healy to continue the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Second motion to reconsider?
I think Alex, or did you make that? I'll make a motion to reconsider, second what the solicitor said.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Yello, seconded by Counselor Vandover. Discussion quickly. Do you want to redline what these lots are that we're reconsidering?
I will do that. I thought that would be.
Solicitor will take care of.
I thought that would be helpful.
Do you want me to list them for the record at all?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, plat 185 lot 31, in addition to what we already have redlined out, which is 185 lot 31-1, we also need to include plat 185 lot 31-2, plat 185 31-3. So in total.
And two more, 33 and 34.
And 33 and 34. So 185-33, 185-34.
But we had actually just said that 185-31-2 and -3 were not relevant.
That's right. They're out as well.
The solicitor's going to verify, cross-check with the maps.
But what we're talking about tonight, just so we're all clear, we don't get surprised, because last meeting we ended like this. We were taking out a couple of lots and we, not all the lots got taken out, so.
I know, and stuff got redlined.
Yeah, so. In the, in the, in the last sentence of section A is AP 185 lot 31 is out, AP 185 lot 31-1 is out, AP 185 lot 31-2 is out, AP 185 lot 31-3 is out, skipping 32, AP 185 lot 33 is out, AP 185 lot 34 is out.
Well, I don't, I mean, I'm not voting on any of that tonight because I don't have.
We're putting on it, but we're putting it in the minute so that the.
Can I just finish my?
The staff, the staff is.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Yello. Go ahead.
Follow your own rules.
Follow you. You have the floor.
What I was saying is, as long as we're not saying, oh, those are definitely coming out until it's verified, because not all of us have access to the map. So the solicitor was going to verify all of that and bring it, and bring it back to us. That's all I'm saying, Mr. President.
Okay.
It sounded like you were saying that they were definitely out, out, out. We don't know that yet.
They're definitely out, in my opinion. I want, I want those, those, what, five lots to be evaluated and not to be surprised like we are tonight.
But I don't think.
This is ridiculous.
No.
Okay. Motion made to rescind by Counselor Yello, seconded by Counselor.
Yeah, no, I just want to clarify that, that all the lots will be re-verified, and the solicitor will do that.
I don't know if the solicitor as much as the town staff, but the manager will get it done. I know you want to get this meeting built, so.
They work together.
Yes. I have a motion on the, to rescind. Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion rescinded. That concludes our agenda and our reopening of the public hearing. We have an executive session on. Does the council wish to go forward with that?
Motion to continue the executive session.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second, but I also have a question. I know we're continuing the public hearing into the next one, but do we have to close it today? No? Okay. So second on Dylan's motion.
All in favor?
Wait, wait. I have a question. An executive session is, I mean, is this stuff we really have to talk about tonight? Or is there something the solicitor has to present to us?
I didn't put it on.
Oh, you didn't?
It's, it's for the November hearing. It's just adding additional questions.
Yeah, it's something I'd like to, because before November 3rd, after November 3rd.
It should be fairly quick.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully. Yeah, oh yeah. As long as it's before November 3rd, I don't care.
All in favor of the motion to continue?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Counselor Shalaba and Counselor Yello. That concludes the meeting. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I thought we did. What was the motion?
We continued.
Continued, yeah.
Well, I didn't understand the motion then. I thought it was to go into our executive session.
There was a motion to continue it to October 20.
All right, well, I'll change my vote to yes then.
You don't want to go in tonight? No.
Did we vote to adjourn? Yeah.
I second, we can adjourn.
Healy, seconded all in favor?
Yes.
Council is adjourned.
...